Good morning. Welcome to our Board of Accounting Commissioners meeting on April 27, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do have several emails to recognize today. We have four emails opposing turning Royal Park into a parking lot. And I know they had an event there Friday afternoon on Earth Day with a lot of artists participating. So it was quite a lovely event. And we had some phone messages, too. And then we had one email expressing concerns of rapid overdevelopment in Deschutes County. So thank you for those letters. Is there anyone in the room then that wanted to make a comment today? No? Stephanie, is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. We actually have no consent agenda today, so we will go to action item number one. Oh, I did want to make a comment on the metal recycling containers that were brought in last, maybe last week.
Little propane tanks.
Yeah, the little propane tanks. We do accept them at the household waste hazardous collection program. So you have to go when we have household hazardous waste collection. You can leave them in a special area if you take them at a different time and just let them know what you're doing. So thank you, Rondell, for bringing that to our attention. Yes, Will.
Welcome. Good morning, Board. Will Groves, your planning manager here today to talk to you about the Deschutes 2020 comprehensive plan and exciting step that we've reached here, which is a potential consultant selection in that process. Next slide, please. Can I do that? Oh, I can do that. All right. And specifically, what we're here before you today is to talk about a consideration of approval and signature of a notice of intent to award to MIG Incorporated. And later in the slide deck, we'll talk a little bit about the process of how they became the recommended consultant. Of course, you know, the comprehensive plan is our big guiding policy document for growth and development over a 20-year period. It's aspirational document with goals and policies. And we last updated that in 2011. So it's, we tend to update these on about a 10-year interval. And so that's come back around. And the board has been amazing in their support of both the community and the Community Development Department in championing for this comprehensive plan update and providing funding and leadership associated with that. So we're all, we're really excited to get this process underway. Certainly, it's time for an update. We've seen significant population growth in the past decade, over 25%. There've been changes to our trends in economic development, our housing issues, natural hazards. Certainly wildfires come into the form even more than it was a decade ago. And we've done piecemeal amendments over the years, but this is a big revisit. You know, with some regularity, Board, you've been, you've heard the community being asked, hey, what do you think about this particular development? Or what do you think about this particular policy? This is really an opportunity to go out to the community and say, what's important to you? What are you thinking about? This is, we're coming out with the consultant to ask the broadest questions about how people would like to see their planning system respond to them in the next 20 years. Do you have any questions about kind of a general introduction to why we're here, how we're here, what a comprehensive plan's about?
Not at this moment.
One thing I'd like to understand a little better, Will, is with the comprehensive plan update, will there be policy or regulatory changes that come with the comp plan update? Or do those follow the comp plan update?
That's a great question. So the comprehensive plan has goals, which are really aspirational statements about what you hope is going to happen. And so, you know, those exist now and those could be changed, updated, left the same. From those goals, policies are chosen under those, that specific, specific ways that those goals might be implemented. So let's say there was an agency that we wanted to coordinate with better. We would have a goal of coordinating with an agency, maybe a policy to work together on a specific program. And then what would come out of that and a final part of this process is an implementation plan, which the action items come out with. So specifically, you know, in this year, you know, meet with these people to try to achieve this outcome. So the comprehensive plan is really backing it all the way up to what are we generally trying to do? Specifically, how are we going to do it in, or generally, how are we going to do it in policies? And then down to action items that come in a separate plan, which are, you know, when, where, how specifically is this going to be implemented?
So yeah, I am a strong advocate for this effort. You know, this is that, that big picture, long-term look. You know, we definitely were switching gears now from, you know, worldwide pandemic that has pushed people maybe out of some bigger cities, looking for that rural opportunity, but Deschutes County is becoming, you know, less rural, more populated. And it's really time to take that big picture look. And it's, it's, you know, it's the business of how do we grow? And I really hope, you know, many, many people get involved, provide input on this, but also just digest what the big picture is. Because each time there is an application for development or an urban growth boundary request, how does it fit into the big picture? So this is the Deschutes County big picture. You know, having that 20-year period, it's kind of looking at the horizon. We don't know exactly what's over it, but 20 years out, this is kind of what we can think of. And doing it every 10 years is very valuable at this time.
Thank you. And so I have with me today Nicole Marrell, our senior planner in the Long Range Division. And she's going to talk a little bit about the requests for proposals we received and the process that we went through to come to recommend this consultant for you today.
Good morning, Commissioners. So great to see you. So I'm sure as a few of you know, I was previously working for Deschutes County, went over to the City of Sisters where I was working as their principal planner and was able to engage with the comprehensive plan update for the city there. So I'm so happy to return and be able to be a part of this project in, you know, for Deschutes County's comprehensive plan update.
And thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. So the RFP review process was pretty extensive and it was led by Will prior to my return. But there were quite a few people involved in that process, including county staff, agency partners, some nonprofit partners. So the details of those folks that were included are in the packet. But there were two different stages. The first being a scoring of the actual RFP themselves and the second being an interview process where the consultants were, you know, requested to present on their approach and how they would tailor their approach to Deschutes County. Throughout that process, Angelo Planning Group, now called MIG, there was a merger in early 2022, was the highest scoring proposal in both rounds. They were, I think, you know, seen as really having some great experience in central Oregon. They've worked on projects in Sisters recently for the city of Bend, for the city of Lepine. They did a code audit there. So they are familiar with kind of the culture and climate of Deschutes County specifically. Next slide, please. So within the scope of work, we just wanted to highlight a few items of why we think this consultant will provide a great approach and how they've kind of outlined their scope of work. So again, that local experience is really valuable here. They're aware of some of our key partners, especially within the cities. They're aware of some of the advocacy groups that we work with regularly. They have access to a variety of engagement tools. So that's actually the, the majority of the scope of work is leading community engagement efforts, both online and in person. So they have access to a few tools that they can use, you know, looking at an application called Considerate, where you're able to get sort of real-time feedback on policies. They also have what you see in the slide here, which was used in Sisters. It's called Mentimeter. So you're able to gauge, you know, consensus on, on policy direction real-time during a meeting. They're also able to provide us with meeting in a box materials, some really graphically engaging materials that we can bring out as county staff into the community at smaller meetings. And overall, they're able to bring some really great technical expertise through some of their sub consultants who specialize in natural resources. So we're really excited to have their team help inform us with a lot of that technical knowledge that come with their specialties. And last, the actual document, we're aiming to have this be a really accessible, user-friendly document. So comprehensive plans are often pretty confusing to a lot of people. People don't interact with them very often. So the goal is to have it be sort of a coffee table style book where people can really see the goals and policies of Deschutes County and understand how they apply. With that, I'll turn it back to Will.
All right. Oh, wait. There we go. All right. So let's talk a little bit about the, the next steps here. You know, certainly we want to make an opportunity for any questions you have about this particular consultant or a process getting there. And let's, let's take a moment and leave some space for that. Is there, do you have any questions about our interactions with the consultants, the various consultants? Any, anything about why or how MIG came to be our, our chosen consultant? Our recommended consultant?
So my only thought is your Angelo Planning Group is a previous version of this and I have worked with them, the Bend Urban Growth Boundary Efforts there. You know, we do live in this statewide definition of land use, which, you know, politically I would advocate for maybe looking at it, you know, opening that book a little bit. And so I'm referring to the state legislature changing the system. But, you know, it seems like every topic that we deal with is kind of shaved to a fine point and has been litigated to high heaven on a lot of different things. So, you know, there's opportunities to just kind of, as I say, it's kind of sacrilegious to think, let's maybe open up that land use system in Oregon and look for what else could we be doing now? I really do, and this is, you know, my experience now. I like the idea of being in a city, being able to leave that city, being in the rural for a while and entering the next city. And this is our example between Bend and Redmond here. But we do have a lot of development pressure also. And then in the big picture of Deschutes County, we are 79% publicly owned. So, you know, we really, as I say, we're pushing hard on, on that private property and the, the vision that we want to keep here. But also, we probably need to welcome people in, provide that private land use opportunity for being able to, you know, live that American dream of property ownership and, and, you know, pursuit of happiness on your private land is what I'm referring to. So yeah, just the big picture there. And as I say, Angelo Planning Group, or, you know, I guess now I need to refer to them as their, their company name, MIG. But just keeping that in mind, you know, like what else is there out there that, you know, what? We limit ourselves sometimes and maybe there's ways to just have that conversation, too. And there's a long history in Deschutes County ever since the 80s. You know, there's a lot of references to, hey, there's a lot of land that was zoned as resource land. It was really just a catch-all for ruralness. What else can we be doing there? So, you know, just looking at the edge of this state land use system is what I would advocate for.
And I'd just like to comment, okay, you had 13 people on the committee making the analysis and they clearly were the group that was selected to do the job. So they, you know, they scored 54 points ahead of everyone of the next group. So that's, that gives me a good feeling that I, you know, we've selected the right people. It's timely to do this. And, you know, just as one of the letters in our citizen input this week was, oh, my gosh, we have too much growth. What do we, what do we do? How do we actually best handle our growth? Because I don't believe Deschutes County is going to stop growing. But truly, we've got to do an excellent job. So it's, it's timely. If it's been since 2011, it's really nice that we're doing this in 2022. So thank you for bringing this to us today.
I guess what I'd say about the, this selection process is that I'm, I'm delighted that we landed upon a firm that has such expertise and, and, you know, such skills with public engagement. Because for me, the most exciting part about this comprehensive planning process is that community engagement on learning from the people of Deschutes County, what they want their, their community to be like as it, as it grows. I mean, there may need to be a whole lot of education involved in this process because, you know, one of, one of the struggles we, we, we come up against in discussions of growth and land use with people is that a lot of people are under the assumption that we can just turn the spigot off and close the gate, which the state land use planning system does not allow us to do. But it does encourage us to grow well and thoughtfully and, you know, in ways that are land-efficient, transportation-smart, infrastructure-smart. And so bringing those two things together, the kind of, the wishes of the residents of Deschutes County plus the, the land use framework that we have to operate within is a, is a really exciting thing to, to be engaged in.
Thank you, Commissioners. So before you today, of course, is this consideration of signature of a notice of intent to award contract. Because of the value of the contract and the way we've structured the, the RFP, this goes through a two-step process where first, if you, if it's your pleasure, you would sign this notice of intent to award that would give an opportunity for the other consultants to appeal or protest the process if they, if they so wished. Presuming none, we would be back after that seven-day appeal period with the board to actually sign a contract. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Any more questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval of a notice of intent to award contract to MIG Incorporated for comprehensive plan update consultant services.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And welcome again, Nicole. I see a lot of smiling faces out there. We're very happy to have you back. So thanks.
And I want to add a quick thank you for our staff. This is the comprehensive plan for our long-range planning staff. This is our Olympics. This is our Super Bowl. For the people who went to school for planning, grew up dreaming of being little planners, this is something they're so excited about. So as much as this is a big deal for the community, it's a prestige and honor to do this for the community. And we're really excited to embark on this. Thanks for your support.
Can I ask about that, like, Nicole, will you be the handler for the, for this consulting firm? Or is it sort of, is it like a big team effort or?
It's a team effort. I, you know, it's interesting that I came out of the current planning wing, of course, of Deschutes County. And so having Nicole here is a huge asset. She's worked specifically with this consultant before and on a comprehensive plan process recently. So I'm feeling a lot stronger having her in the building and this. But I am, I'm the, I'm the person in charge of it and she's going to be supporting me. But so you'll see both of us throughout the process.
Well, and thanks for pointing out that, yeah, it is like the Super Bowl for planners. That's really an interesting concept, the fact that you do go to school and a lot of, a lot of just busy work and all the small little applications and development conflict that happens. But this is it, the big picture, being able to just open it up and take a good look at it. And the more citizen engagement, the better through the whole process.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will, for your, your leadership, truly. We're glad that you will be number one in charge. Item number two. Consideration of Board, I believe Scott Langston, would you like to join us?
Morning, Commissioners. Scott Langton, County Assessor. This is the annual assessment and taxation grant that funds about 18% of the A&amp;T activities in the county. This is a grant that local dollars collected statewide through a $10 recording fee that the clerk collects and then a portion of the delinquent property tax interest that's sent to Salem. Of course, they take money off the top and then reallocate it back to the county. So there's donor counties and there's recipient counties. So like Akari County is going to get far more back in this than what they pay in. Deschutes County, I'm not sure what percentage of it is, but we don't get the entire amount back. But it does represent about 18% of the, the funds. So I don't know if you have specific questions on this or?
So this is one of the foundational finance of the, of the department, also the, the office of, you know, the agreement across the state for, for keeping the doors open and the staff funded it for these efforts.
Yeah, and it is based on a percentage of what is budgeted. Not what's actually spent, but what is budgeted, which usually, you know, comes close somewhere. But that's statewide on that. It is interesting that you're approving this before you approve your budget, but that's done the same way on all 36 counties on what we're going to do for assessment and taxation. And it should be noted, too, if you look, the revenues have stayed relatively statewide flat, at about $20, $22 million statewide since this last big change, which was, we're pushing 20 years now. It, at the, when it first was kind of revamped back then, it represented about 36% of assessment and taxation funding. Now we're down to about 18%. So as you can see, the, the revenues are staying flat, but of course, the cost of providing the service has increased. And that will continue until this grant is restructured.
When would you think that would happen?
AOC has talked about it many times.
Oh.
And there is conversations occurring now with AOC. Where, where traction gains on that and what becomes of that, I'm not sure. But I'm on the Governance Committee as Assessor's Representation for AOC. And I know we're, we are discussing it there. Because as you know, that, you know, you pay about 80% of the cost of assessment and taxation, but you only receive on average, less than 20% on counties of the tax receipts. And it's been a point of contention.
We could make it a priority at our legislative discussions each year and going into the next legislature, have a bill that talks about changing the system up.
Yeah, and there has been in the past. And like I say, they're kind of looking at that again, now how much traction I'll defer to you.
Yep, understood.
As AOC.
Well, it's a good, good to know this number going into the budget, though, too. It just kind of reduces the variables, right? So we have the number, we budget, we, we plug that into the budget and figure out the, the rest of the needs for the department and the office.
Scott, I, I don't really understand why they call this a grant program. It sounds like it's a formula allocation. You know, that, that's annual. And it's, you know, it doesn't sound like it's necessarily competitive, right? As long as you submit the appropriate information, you will receive an allocation. So.
Yeah, and this is most, I, I agree with you, Commissioner. I don't know why they use the term grant in this because it's, it's very different than most grants. Now, the Department of Revenue does have oversight authority through the statutes for making sure that we maintain statewide some consistencies in a minimum level. So if a county were to cut their A&amp;T grant funding or the A&amp;T funding to enough, you could be in jeopardy of losing this grant. And maybe that's the reason they call it a grant. I'm not sure for these monies.
Okay. Interesting.
Do we have a motion?
So I'll move Board signature of Resolution 2022-024, approving the assessment and taxation grant application with the Oregon Department of Revenue.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, thank you for you and your office and everybody in the office, you know, keeping track of everything. This is definitely a time of, you know, assessed value rising, which is kind of by formula, but also new, new development on the ground here in Deschutes County. And that's only going to accelerate with urban growth boundary efforts in Bend and Redmond and the continued development in Lepine that's really starting to take off at 100 houses at a time instead of one or two or three. So, yeah, a lot of activity. So we'll, we'll make sure you're funded for the best we can for keeping up to speed with it all.
I appreciate that. We do have our running shoes on there.
There you go.
And I guess I should note this grant, the, we also have Tax Department is part of this, as well as the Board of Property Tax Appeals Budget and the Clerk's Office. And then the portion of the IT Department that directly supports assessment and taxation.
One I'd also acknowledge, I mean, the City of Sisters has really got a big play happening, especially with that federal land being converted to private. So there'll be a lot of development there also. So all of our cities just kind of, and then what about accessory dwelling units? Look out, right? So when we have that coming online next year, too.
Every dull moment.
That's right.
We can only hope next year, yes. So Commissioner DeBonne?
Vote yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Nice to see you this morning. And we'll have to see if we can get together and if you really, if we should push something with AOC. This would be the opportunity to work on it now.
Yeah, let's have those conversations.
Well, and what might be valuable is just taking, you know, like a Monday afternoon work session and kind of talking about the history, the versions of what has been proposed, what's possible. So we can get clear on, you know, just this line item to advocate for. Because we're at AOC meetings, we can go to the legislature and advocate also. But just as I say, understanding kind of the last five or 10 years, what, what's been proposed, what almost made it or didn't make it, and then what we'd like to see. So I'd, I'd propose, you know, scheduling that just for a Monday afternoon, just so we're up to speed on it.
Definitely. And I am, I'm on legislative, so when it gets to a vote. Okay, good.
As part of that discussion, if you can, if you have a sense of the history of what legislators have taken an interest in this issue and have been willing to, you know, kind of carry it or advance it, that would be really helpful to know as well. And, you know, if any of them are our local legislators, then we, we want to kind of pat them on the back and, and ask them to redouble their efforts. And if they're not, then we, we know the first people we need to start with in terms of advocacy. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Dan, good morning. Thank you for joining us. Item number three.
Yes, thank you. So the Budget Office and Finance is here today requesting an additional 1.0 limited duration position for ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Management and Compliance. As you know, the Budget Office is responsible for the county's budget, long-term planning, capital planning at this point, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Management and Federal Compliance, Subrecipient Compliance and Contracting, which is, we've almost awarded that entire $38.4 million. And we are really having to do a lot of work on, you know, kind of the non-public facing side at this point, making sure that we are in compliance with federal standards and that our sub recipients are following through on their projects and whatnot. And so that is what has led us to come here today, just having this discussion. And if there's general support, we'll bring a resolution forthcoming next week. Any questions?
So Dan, by calling it a limited duration, are we going to get someone to apply? And what is the duration?
The duration would be through 6/30/2024. And we'd essentially take the funds that we had allocated for Betsy Tucker at 100% ARPA. And we wouldn't have an ARPA increase per se. There would be no money coming out of ARPA to fund this. But Betsy Tucker would then go about $150,000 to ISF charges. Should be reallocated. And that would allow us to address the growing budget, the complexity of the budget, as well as the need for this federal compliance with, with the $38.4 million that we've almost allocated here for ARPA. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. You know, that's a great question. I mean, that's what part of this discussion is. We can bring the resolution back as, you know, reflective of the Board's direction. So we could certainly make it limited duration ARPA and then regular duration going forward and roll it into the budget, as that would probably be needed in a couple of years as well. It's really up to your discretion. I'm happy to have a conversation about it.
Well, I just know how hard it is to find employees at this moment in time, and if we're saying it's limited for two years, yes, I mean, you know, I know you need the help. I know there's a lot of detail that's behind, behind what we've done already. So the details are really important, you know. Federal compliance, I'm sure it's, we have pages and pages and pages of federal compliance. So I just would hope that if we, we do agree that someone applies or we immediately change it to, you know, not just a limited duration, but you need your help.
We do, correct. Yeah, and I would certainly, myself, be supportive of a, of a regular duration position, obviously, and that maybe focused on ARPA 0.75% of the time for two years and then rolled into the budget for long-term forecasting, decision support and departmental support after that. But, you know, that's why we're here, to have that conversation.
Well, and I'm supportive of that concept. You know, that's a future, future ask, obviously, so let's separate the two for now. But, you know, for the ARPA allocations we've made, I know that every time we say, oh, here's $100,000 or a million or $5 or $6 million, there's going to be paperwork and compliance for a couple of years on that. So I absolutely support this effort, and, you know, the timeframe that we're talking about, as I say, that so then the next fiscal year around, we will talk about, you know, is there, is there a workload for that? Is that the right thing for the Office? But, yeah, for now, I really do support this position and the discussion we're having in a public meeting. You can always reference it, saying, well, looks like there's generally support for folding this in in the future, which will be a future discussion.
I mean, I really appreciate this chart you put together for us, and, you know, looking at this, ARPA aside, which is just an incredible opportunity for us to send $38 million into all sorts of important purposes, and it's worth a certain amount of money for the next couple of years to ensure that those funds are going to the great purposes that we allocated them for. Just like the comparisons with a number of other comparable or close to comparable-sized counties, I mean, we're clearly way below other counties in our size class in terms of budget staff, you know, core budget staff. So to go to Commissioner Daire's question, I would, I would be supportive of, of pursuing this recruitment as a, as a regular position as opposed to limited duration, on the assumption that when, when ARPA duties wind down in two years, we would be able to pull this person into the, you know, kind of core budgeting functions and staffing.
I'm just thinking, for guidance, you know, are you, I guess, the two of us went two different ways a little bit on that. If you want to provide clarity, Commissioner?
And, yeah, so basically, the resolution that comes back to us, do we want it to be for a limited duration position or a full, or a regular position?
Honestly, in today's world, I think we have to not have a limited duration so that we actually have perhaps more people coming. I mean, it was interesting looking at the survey from our employees, and the number one feedback was that most employees had our health insurance as number one. I was, it tied with compensation in one spot, but I, you know, I know that right now, we have departments, we have, what, 30 people short in our behavioral health at the moment, according to what I talked to Janice about. But I just feel like it's always hard to get employees in today's market and saying with that, that we need someone for two years, limited duration now. It's, that just makes the pool smaller, and truly, in today's world, we need to, like, appeal to more people.
Thank you.
So do I make a motion, then?
So be given guidance for the paperwork following.
So I don't know, I think, and you also think that it's probably...
I would support moving forward with a regular, a regular recruitment as opposed to limited duration.
Well, and I was halfway there, so I, as I say, I don't think I'm going to be opposing it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back with a resolution based on that guidance next week.
But Dan, thank you for being conservative with this ask. I mean, I really do appreciate that. I, you know, we're caught, and it's very unique circumstances, and so I appreciate that, but I think for the health of your department, let's, let's try and get someone that can actually come in and be a greater asset to you, all the work that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Commissioners. Thank you.
So we'll see it back on our consent agenda, then, maybe next week?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, both.
Okay, we are now at item number four. Anthony, yes?
Good morning, Commissioners. Before I get started, I want to follow up on sort of Will's comments about the comp plan being there, Super Bowl. I will note that every time I'm in front of you, you are my Super Bowl, so I wanted to one-up Will if I could. Thank you, Nick. That was the response I was looking for. Appreciate that. For the record, Anthony Regini, Principal Planner, Community Development Department. For those joining us in Zoom, Caroline House is the assigned senior planner, so I'm subbing in because she's out of the office today. So I just want to make that clear for those who are joining remotely. The item before you...
Wait a minute, does that mean you're the second string? Uh-oh.
I am. Well, as Nick and Peter know and Will know, I've always been second string.
Oh, boy.
So that's a, I'm fine with that particular role. So thank you, Commissioner Devon, for that. The item before you is a consideration whether to hear or not hear two appeals of a hearings officer's decision on a land use compatibility statement. So again, for those, again, joining remotely, Commissioner Devon, did you have a question?
Just for clarity, when you say two, is there, is there two decisions to make or one? So, you know, yeah, so one decision to hear, there's two different appeals that triggered this.
That's right. And I'll talk about that a little bit in the slide deck. Now, great, appreciate the clarification. So in this particular...
I'm still thinking about the Super Bowl. I went to the Super Bowl once, and I was nine months pregnant, so that was really a fun day.
Awesome. So again, the, the item in, I guess, that's the center of this project is a land use compatibility statement, or LUX, from Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, related to a proposal by Tumalo Homeowners Association to essentially extend sewer lines within the unincorporated community of Tumalo. So the purpose of the LUX, from the county standpoint, is determine whether or not the use is allowed, and if so, allowed or not, and if is allowed, what other approvals are necessary. So that's sort of the genesis of the LUX.
Question?
Yes.
So this is DEQ's form that was handed to us for clarity?
That's correct.
And would they be in a spot where they would be able to make this decision usually, and it just came to us because of county code?
So in this particular case, Tumalo Homeowners Association, again, are proposing a sewer extension, essentially. They have an existing wastewater facility, and they want to extend the sewer lines within most of unincorporated Tumalo. So as part of that process, they have to apply for a permit through DEQ. And as DEQ's process, they're required to coordinate with local jurisdictions to make sure that what is being proposed complies with our code. So that's really the, the purpose of the LUX is, as you stated, we're being asked to sign a form to tell DEQ whether or not this proposal is allowable pursuant to our zoning code.
But I'm just thinking, so it's there, is there a scenario where they would be able to sign their own form, or is this the standard path for this?
This is the standard path, because...
Because I know we've done land use compatibility for, you know, marijuana grows or to the state, you know, but it was our form for us to make a clarity, is my understanding.
Yeah, well, and that's, you know, part of the question surrounding this LUX is, is there going to be a required follow-on local approval? And so I'm just going to go ahead and skip ahead here. That's okay. I'm going to skip ahead here. The hearings officer, essentially through this hearings process, found that extension of the sewer lines in this case are allowed outright, with the exception of the floodplain zone, where additional land, local land use review would be required. And so from the county's perspective, at least with this hearings officer decision, there would be an additional required review for those portions of the lines that would be in the floodplain zone, but other areas where the sewer lines would be, they're allowed outright without additional review. And so Commissioner Chang, you had a question?
When it says, but that additional requirements need to be met before compatibility can be determined, that's all about the floodplain zone, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the hearings officer, in his decision, really provided some interesting guidance. So when you look at the decision, the LUX is very specific that it does not by itself approve the installation of the lines. So again, at least in the floodplain zone, that we'd be required to come in for a conditional use permit. Also noted in the decision, Tumalo Homeowners Association would require to secure any approvals from underlying owners of the right-of-way. Most of those right-of-way are county roads, so it'd be the road department commissioners. Some of those right-of-ways are private right-of-ways, and so the applicant would need to secure authorization from those owners. The hearings officer decision also pointed out the LUX does not approve any development, which is reliant on connection to the sewer lines. And third, that the project is really limited in scope to what was presented during the hearings process, which are two- and four-inch lines. And, and as I mentioned, the applicant would still be required to secure authority or approval from the underlying landowner for those rights-of-ways. Any questions about the hearings officer's decision? Okay. So as, as a result of the hearings officer's decision that was mailed, we received two timely appeals, file numbers 324A and 325A. As I note in the slide deck, the first was submitted by LandWatch, and they identified three issues on appeal. The second was by Bend Research, which identified eight issues on appeal. Caroline did a really nice job of summarizing all 11 issues on appeal in the staff report, so for that reason, I'm not going to go over them at this point. As I noted, the really decision for the Board today is to hear or not hear, and so really for more for the members of the public. When the Board has to choose between to hear or not hear, there are three sort of items that they can rely on. First is the record developed before the hearings officer, the notices in this case of appeal, and any staff recommendation. So at this time, the Board will consider whether to hear or not hear the appeal. I will note, if the Board declines to hear the appeals, then the hearings officer's decision becomes the final appeal, and any subsequent appeals would go through the process as outlined by state law, which in this case would be the land use supportive appeals. And with that, I am available for questions.
Anthony, that owners association, the homeowners association, does that, is, does the homeowner, the, the area of the homeowners association align with the area of the proposed development?
No. This particular homeowners association is a very specific, it's a much smaller subdivision in Tumalo, but the operation of the sewer, I guess, the management of the sewer facility is through the homeowners association, so it's not the entirety of the community of Tumalo. It's actually a very small subdivision within Tumalo.
One, another question I wanted to ask is, you know, what is, what are the scenarios if we do not hear this appeal? Like, what was likely to happen? Is it, is this like many of the other appeals that we've considered that, you know, this is going to go to Luba anyway, so...
I strongly suspect it'll go to Luba. If the, I suspect it will go to Luba, whether the Board hears it or not.
Right. But one of the things that makes the, that seems to make this unique or, you know, different than many of the, many of the issues we've considered appeals for or hearing appeals for is that this is, this is an issue where we would likely receive local deference from the state as opposed to, you know, a lot of, a lot of issues that are asked to consider appeals on, you know, are issues where the, you know, the state is interpreting, you know, state statute and is not likely to give us deference. Is that, is that accurate?
No, I agree, I appreciate the point. The primary issue that staff sort of wrestled with and the hearings officer did as well is, in our zoning code, we have a definition of utility facility, and within that definition, there is a breakout between major and minor. So the question really for staff and then the hearings officer was, is the proposal, again, two and four-inch lines, is that a major facility or is it a minor facility? And our zoning code really doesn't help us very much because it doesn't define sort of numerically what those lines look like in terms of size or even area to be, to be served. So to your question, will we receive deference? I'm going to pull a line that I've heard from legal counsels over the years, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, which is, Luba will decide whether or not they want to grant deference. I am no longer, I no longer assume that we will get deference, even though this is really kind of turns on a local code definition. So, but I think Dave can speak probably more to Luba's penchant to grant or not grant deference.
All I would add on that point is, I think the ultimate pivot point in this appeal is, what is a utility facility? You get down into the weeds on whether it's a minor or major, but it's ultimately, what's a utility facility? That's a term of state statute, administrative rule, and Court of Appeal decisions at the statewide level. I just, the cynic in me says that the Board could spend a whole lot of time on this and come up with its interpretations and that Luba will, I think, more than likely not provide deference on that point. What's a utility facility has statewide ramifications, and I don't think they're going to defer to Deschutes County to decide what a utility facility is, and especially if we're parsing them down between a major and a minor. That's just my take from having dealt with Luba, you know, since 1994 and seeing where the idea of deference, how that's sort of morphed over the years from the beginnings of Senate Bill 100 to where we are now. It's become a much more centralized land use system, and some of the local control that was part of Senate Bill 100 is oftentimes steered away from that under this concept of, well, this is a statewide issue and it's state statute or state administrative rule, and therefore, we're not going to defer to the local jurisdiction. And so, yeah, I mean, I can't give you a numeric, but I, if I were putting odds on it, I would, I would put my money on the you don't get deference bet instead of the you do get deference bet. Now, it's not a slam dunk either way. I, we've had other ones, I think Commissioner Chang referring to, that were a lot clearer, that we weren't going to get deference. This one's a little more in that gray area, but again, my experience, and I litigated, one of those was involved in litigating one of the Court of Appeal cases on utility facility back in Polk County days. It is a statewide issue, and so I'm just having trouble seeing where the Luba referees are going to, in essence, you know, stand down on that issue and just accept what the Deschutes County Commissioners decide is a utility facility, be it minor or major.
So that's 28 years of experience, you're saying, from like 1994?
Whatever that math works out to, yeah. It's been a long time.
No, I'm going like, okay, this doesn't look good. If we were going to...
I mean, there's certainly a lot of gray. I mean, this is not as black or white as some of the other ones have been. I will acknowledge that.
It is gray.
But you're asking my opinion and assessment, and I, I would lean more towards you won't get deference than you will.
And Chair, so, and if they did decide that we would have deference, they would remand it, and we would have the opportunity to make the decision at that time, at the local level? Only in the unlikely event that they did believe it was a local decision.
Yes, that would be the process, if you remanded back.
Okay. All right.
Thank you for that, Dave. The, this question of whether this is major or minor, I think is still pretty interesting and something I would like to learn a little bit more about. That is a, I mean, the footprint of this system is pretty extensive. I, I don't, I don't know how they would define major or minor, but I mean, that is a pretty extensive footprint. And do we ever sent, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering from the record, like, how many parcels are, is this, is this covering? I mean, that...
I, that I don't know. I don't know that we ever actually counted how many parcels.
I mean, that's...
In Tumalo. It covers the entire UUC.
Yeah, I mean, that's hundreds and maybe hundreds and hundreds of...
I would imagine a couple hundred properties.
So one of the questions I have is, kind of higher level even than maybe, you know, the beginning of this whole thing, wasn't there a right-of-way ask by this utility provider? provider from the homeowners association that we generally supported? So I don't even know if you're going to be able to answer this, but the fact that the road department said, yes, you can put it in the right-of-way, a previous version of this.
I'm gonna...
And it was going to be a liability issue that they didn't want to sign on to. You know, it's like, yes, you have access, and you need to take responsibility if there's a problem. And then there was just a point there where it's like, well, we don't want to take on all that. So...
Speak to what I know, and I think Will may have a...
And how is this different, is my question?
My recollection and my understanding is that the homeowners association has been in sort of discussions with the road department regarding essentially a contract, or some kind of a... Not contract, an agreement for the lines. But the contract was, or the agreement was never signed. And I don't know where they are in terms of that agreement, but I know that there have been numerous discussions with the road department, between the road department and the homeowners association.
In the bigger picture, what is this gain the applicant, you know, the Lux? What's the motivation?
The... In order to extend a sewer facility, you have to get an approval from DEQ. And for... As DEQ, as part of their review process, comes out to the local government and says, hey, coordination time, do you guys... Do they need to do anything else before they engage in this action? And so that's specifically what the Lux is asking us. And so, from a land use perspective, so the hearings officer came back and said, generally no, you know, but, you know, in the floodplain, some further action would be required. If... So that's the land use process they come through. There's a second process by which the road department and the board, as the managers of these public right-of-ways, where it would go through public right-of-way, will be asked, hey, do you want to allow this in your public right-of-way? How, under what circumstances? And that's actually, that's something that we don't work with in land use as much, and I don't know if, Dave, if you have any recollections of that process. But there'll be a second step, as I understand it, where the road department and the board will make a choice about whether or not, whether and how to allow these facilities in the right-of-way.
And I think the answer was yes, with an agreement and agreed-upon liability, and we didn't quite get it landed.
That was exactly...
But we were close.
It was hung up in the area of bonding, insurance, hold harmless, liability issues. It wasn't so much of, we're not going to allow you to utilize the right-of-way, but it was going to be...
Protection of the asset.
Yeah, you're going to need to provide certain financial assurances and liability protections. And it sort of broke down at that level, was my recollection, and I don't know the current status of it. It broke down, maybe it's just on a back burner. I'm sure they'll have to cross that bridge at some point, but...
That'll still be...
Yep.
And maybe literally.
This is separate from that.
At least go under the highway.
Yeah, this Lux is totally separate from that.
Yep, understood.
It's a separate issue.
Nuts and bolts question. I'm like, I know where Bend Research is, but I'm trying to figure out where it falls in this map. I mean, I just kind of know where Bend Research is.
If I recall correctly, and Will, if you can pull up dial, I want to say it's in, it's on the west side of the highway, so it's across the highway. And it's, I don't believe it's the really large parcel in the southwest, but it's in and around that area. Yeah. It is certainly within the UUC, Bend Research.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's somewhere, it is somewhere within the green area?
Yes, on the west side of the highway.
So they're advancing an appeal as an affected party, not as an excluded party?
They are, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they've applied, they've submitted an appeal, and they are certainly within the UUC.
Interesting.
And specifically, they're in that, on the portion that is in the south and west of the map in green, they are located in that large square area there in the south and west corner of the Tumalo UUC. They've got a facility up on the hill there.
Okay. Kind of procedural question, or kind of the, you know, question about the scope of this decision, whether to hear the appeal or not. Yeah, at the 90,000-foot level, I think there's a lot of support at the county, and I believe among the Board of Commissioners, to build out a wastewater system in Tumalo. There's been a lot of questions about what the right pathway to do that is. The county has even allocated funds and indicated a willingness to invest in a feasibility So I'm trying to understand how the, this application and kind of the forward motion on this specific proposal interacts with those overall processes to consider a number of options to move forward with wastewater facilities. And what I would like to ask is, you know, whether, kind of, keeping this proposal moving along, along their pathway, what effects that has on the, you know, overall efforts to explore, you know, like in a comprehensive way, what the options are to get wastewater in, you know, in the Tumalo area. But I'm not sure if that's within the scope of the deliberations we're having today, or whether that's outside the scope. So, Dave, or somebody else, if you could...
I believe it would be outside the scope of whether to hear the appeals on these Lux, but I think the point you raise is very sound. There are a lot of moving parts here, and if I consulted my crystal ball, you know, I don't know that this is going to have the life of Thornburg, but I could see this being a many multi-year litigation matter in various avenues and issues. Just the fact that you have, you know, a substantial player like Bend Research involved alerts me to that. They're certainly going to have the ability to challenge this for some time if they choose to, so... But no, I... Those larger concerns of the feasibility study and having that larger master plan almost, or, you know, more of a planning process, those are all relevant, but I don't believe, and obviously Anthony and Will could, I think, speak to this probably more directly, but I don't believe they would impact, or they certainly wouldn't create any type of conflict or any situation that would cause the board to have to recuse itself from addressing the pending Lux appeals.
And more specifically, you know, again, Commissioners, when you consider to hear or not hear, you're allowed to consider the record developed before the hearings officer, and this was not... It was raised, but not, I think, to the level of detail, Commissioner Chang, that you're asking about. And so it's, I don't know that, again, those discussions are part of the record for your consideration, whether to hear or not.
One of the, one of the appellants specifically mentioned the feasibility study, the kind of, the feasibility study in the works, but I don't know if...
Generally, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with all, you know, the big picture that I have been through, and I do have history on this, I would be inclined not to hear this, you know, appeal at this time. And there's a lot of moving parts here, and I want to be engaged, and I will be engaged with the Tumalo Community Plan, in fact, so I'll be in room with anybody and everybody on this topic and all topics of the development of the area. But, yeah, I'm just thinking the big picture here about the decision, I would not support hearing this appeal.
And it makes me worried when you say, Dave, it's going to be a multi-year challenging event, and I think about just the Mexican restaurant, I believe it's on Cook, that closed maybe in 15, 16, a long time ago. And I remember reading the reason why they closed, because they would have had to spend, what, a couple, $300,000 at the time to bring their system up to date. So, yeah, I... It looks like we... We shouldn't hear it. It should go on to Luba, and hopefully, it won't be a multi-year, because it could be 10 years from the time that restaurant closed before some kind of a solution in that community could make that property back into, you know, a running business. It's just sitting there, you know, disintegrating. And there's so many other things that are happening in Tumalo. It's so vibrant whenever you drive through, and truly, I know they need a system that has the capacity.
I feel like there are some important questions raised by the appellants, and the possibility that we would get local deference from the state on this issue is also significant. I feel like, but I would like to learn more about this situation. It may or may not have to happen through hearing and appeal, but, you know, if one of our, if one of our goals is to support the Tumalo community in acquiring wastewater infrastructure, in some ways, hearing this appeal would be a good opportunity to learn more about how that happens and how we can help move that forward. So I would actually be inclined to hear the appeal, but, you know, I'm one vote, so...
Well, with that discussion, I'll move order number 2022-022 in order denying review of the hearings officer's decision on file 24721-1067-PS.
And I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, and your vote, please?
Yeah, no.
Okay, I know, I just didn't know if you had a comment to make. And the chair votes yes. So we will deny review, and hopefully... How long will it take to go to the next hearing?
Well, that's a decision.
No, but I mean, I just wondered, is it like, is this going to be like another six months down the road for... I just, how backed up is this, the Luba board?
Luba's working at a pretty decent rate. Well, I would expect the notice of intent to appeal, the Luba would be filed within the next week to 10 days, and I would expect the record will be due, what's the next... I would think the record will be done in June, so they could have a hearing August.
Okay.
Decision probably by the end of the year, by the end of the calendar year. And just so the board is aware, that if it were to be remanded, just for your knowledge, you've already voted, but it would go back to the hearings officer, since, as the last hearings body to hear it, to hear that, and then the Luba time, the remand timeline is 120 days? 120. Yeah, so it, there probably won't be time for the board to hear it in that case. But because generally, by the time staff gets it, they schedule the hearings officer, there's the open record period, that's probably 90, 90-plus days, so... We will do our best to get it in front of you, if it comes back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, thank you for being here. Thank you, telling us that we are...
You are my super bowl.
Yes. It's a new line. All right, Peter Gatauski, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, Peter Gatauski, Community Development Director. It's a hard act to follow. But I'm really excited to present the board with the 2021 Annual Report and the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Draft Work Plan. The CDD's managers are behind me, which I'll introduce in just a second, but this is the first time we've been able to engage the board in person, and something that I think we've missed, just with our challenges with the pandemic. So I'll just quickly recognize who will be joining us this morning. Randy Scheid, the building official, Sherry Pinner, our management analyst, Todd Cleveland, environmental health supervisor, Angie Havanear, administrative manager, and Will Groves, our planning manager. And just for context, on May 11th, the board is going to conduct a hearing on the draft 2022-2023 work plan. Today, I've asked the managers to summarize briefly the accomplishments from the last calendar year, and just highlight briefly a couple of the proposed 2022-2023 work plan tasks. Before they do, though, I recognize that we have some, a member in the audience, and there may be some people that are listening online, and I think it's important just to provide context of what the work plan and the annual report represent. Just for perspective, the work plan and the annual report are in today's board's work packet, or I said, today's agenda packet. They're also located on CDD's website. So if you did a search with an internet engine, you would be able to find our draft plan. And I just encourage the public that's listening, the board and planning staff, welcome public input. And so please, take a look at the document and provide feedback, and you can send that information to me. You can call me, and my contact information is online, and we will make that, those remarks available to the board at time of the May 11th public hearing. I wanted to let everyone know that I'll be working with Whitney for a press announcement that identifies the May 11th public hearing, so again, we can generate public input to the greatest degree possible. One thing that's noted in the memorandum, as a footnote, we generally receive significant public input on the work plan. Last year was significant. There was tremendous feedback about dark skies and other projects. This year, we just received two comments, and I want to put it in perspective as I see it. As the board is well aware, there are a number of noteworthy projects that are on the work plan, that have been in the works, that the board has expressed support for. And I think it's these noteworthy projects that many of our community members who are interested in land use are supporting. It's just expressed in silent, silent communication, so to speak, or a silence that would normally be expressed in public testimony. But just really quickly, as noted, on one of the first agenda items today was the comprehensive plan update. Commissioner Chang asked about, you know, how does the comprehensive plan get implemented? And what I would, what's worth underscoring is the comprehensive plan, it gets, it's going to be updated with new goals and policies, there's going to be a separate implementation plan, but that update will inform subsequent work plans, again, with direction ultimately from the Board of County Commissioners. So that's a direct linkage to what we're doing, what we do every year, and how we highlight the tasks that are so important to the community. There's the comprehensive plan update, there's the Tumalo Community Plan Update, there's Sisters Country Trails, there's Amule de Winter Range inventory. As both Commissioner Dare and Commissioner DeBonne acknowledged this morning, we have to implement Senate Bill 391, Rural Accessory Dwelling Units. There's Senate Bill 762 related to wildfire mitigation. Those are just some of many projects that are identified in this work plan. And again, why I think there, we haven't seen such a groundswell of members championing certain issues is because when you look at that list and others, we are very much at the forefront of tackling some truly remarkable topics and projects as soon as, I bet some of it are already underway and it will be kicked off momentarily. Again, just for context about what's in the work plan, what it represents, for people that are unfamiliar with it, it includes CDD's mission statement, the board's 2023 goals and policies, the descriptions of different divisions that we have, and what their responsibilities and priorities are. We have staff contact information there across the report, so people can reach out to staff that, you know, are familiar with a certain project or issue. We do summarize our departments' fiscal and operational challenges, retention and recruitment. We are, continue to bring on new staff, and really appreciate the board's support that you've provided us just this current fiscal year. It means a lot, and we're staffing up, and we're getting rightsized. It's just taking us a little bit more time, and there's significant training that comes along with it. There's population estimates, if people want to see where we're headed, as Chair Dare noted about the comprehensive plan update, Deschutes County is going to continue to grow, and we are going to continue to see urbanization. The key is how do we address that? And our department, in partnership with other departments countywide and partners in the community, are well-positioned to address those opportunities and challenges. And then there's a community involvement report, as well as performance measures. The purpose of the annual report, in many respects, is to highlight the achievements of the last calendar year. And again, I'm going to allow the managers, who have been instrumental in maintaining and maintaining... our our service levels in a period of significant permit volume and some staff turnover. They've done an exemplary job of empowering their staff and and again, keeping their eye on those those core functions. Again, this is noted in the memorandum. I want to just highlight what what informs the work plan every year. Certainly, the board has annual goals and objectives that we are very mindful of. There's carryover projects that we we aren't able to get to from year to year that that come over. There's changes in state law. One of those was Senate Bill 391, right? We found those broken links, we were able to patch it, and so we're in a position to implement rural accessory dwelling units, hopefully as early as this fall. There's grants and other funding sources. We have a certified local government grant that helps fund our Historic Landmarks Commission as an example. And then there's public comments, which are vitally important to ensure that staff and ultimately the Board of County Commissioners is hearing from their constituents about what's important to undertake with the resources that we have in our department. The other thing that's important to acknowledge is we will we will, in coordination with the board, as capacity presents itself, will come back to the Board of County Commissioners, or if there's a change in priorities from the board, to ensure that we're meeting your expectations. And so priorities can get shifted, and the board will recognize, you know, just as a refresher, you know, last summer, we were talking about engaging the board on on rural housing issues and and ideas and concepts about houselessness, about how we could examine the rural rural land use laws, and the board ultimately submitted some testimony to to legislative subcommittees about, and Commissioner Devon mentioned it, as well as with the comp plan update, about how the program could adapt to address some of our regional challenges. So those are just examples about how we try to be responsive in light of the board's directives. So that's a lot for just a few minutes to provide context of the work plan. I'm happy to, you know, we are certainly welcome to take any questions you have now, generally about the work plan or about the planning commission's recommendations. But if you want to hold off on those questions, I would certainly just like to offer an introduction of of the management team, just to offer their their remarks here in person, just given their their responsibilities and the fact that I think they're leaders in their respective disciplines, and we're so lucky to have them, so.
We are so lucky to have them. Thank you for saying that, Peter.
So Chair Dare, I I'll turn it over to you if if this is a good time to just have our staff come up and introduce themselves and offer some opening remarks.
That'd be excellent.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome, and it's great to see everybody in person, just like you say.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Randy Scheid, county building official and and the Building Safety Division Director. Thank you, thank you for having us. This has been quite a different year. It's been one of the the strangest ones I've seen since my tenure in this industry, and I think it's been a big task for managers to manage under these new conditions that we're experiencing. In 2021, we issued 775 single-family dwelling permits, which, if not a record ever, is certainly a record during during the last 10, 12 years. Even though we have been, even though we have issued more permits normally for the last from 2016, 2017, 2018, we're in the mid 500s. And all of a sudden, when COVID happened, everyone thought we might be having to lay off and go down, all of a sudden, we saw things take off. However, issuing the permits and finally in a structure during COVID with supply chain issues, with staggering disciplines, with labor issues, has been a very, very different set of rules here. Our Plans Examiners were swamped, our Field Inspectors, even though we're not seeing as many field inspections, are conducting more workarounds, because people have money out on construction loans, but they don't have a garage door. And we're saying garage doors aren't in our code, really, except for when you put an automatic closure arm. So we have workarounds to get people to be able to get out of a construction loan, to let their banks close and 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 loan, a 30-year loan on these structures. So it has been a very hectic year for our Field Inspectors, even though the inspection counts were down. And and I think that that all the credit for the successes we've experienced belong with our staff and and with the permit tax and and the rest of the the people at CDD. It's 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 a great customer service oriented division. I'm proud to be there. We had 541 of those 775 new family homes were in the county, which our homes in the county tend to be larger, more complex, sometimes second and third homes, what I think Nick refers to as cold bedroom homes sometimes. These these homes are, we have a new area out in the West Side transect, some of them are just incredible structures, and they are taking, it feels like twice as long to bring them to final as it did before COVID. We had 120 in La Pine and 114 in the City of Sisters. So our our cities are really growing as well with the single-family dwellings and contributing to our our business levels. Also, it should be noted that we do, at times like this, I was here during the 2000, mid 2000 growth, we also see more manufactured homes than we normally would, because when people want to move here and they can't get a house built in time, they will they will choose to put a manufactured home on there, which sometimes just means that we'll have another bite at that apple in 10 to 20 to 30 years.
Referring to my replacement dwelling where I live, exactly. We've been through that, yes.
And so so we have that. Right now, in in plan review, we have 56 plans ready for review. We have 20 plans that are holding for Planning Department's approval, the vast majority of that 15 of them from our cities. So we coordinate with the planning divisions of our city before we can conduct the plan review, because if the planning will not allow it, then we we cannot issue our our plan review. Our commercial plan review is pretty heavy right now. We have 67 total, 23 of them are are ready for review, and 44 are on hold. A lot of these are lockoff units, which several years ago, we engaged with the board to require lockoff units to be accessible and to have fire sprinklers, because these are required to be available for 38 out of any 52-week period. They are therefore transient in nature, and they and and they trigger these requirements. So we're we're working with our our destination resorts on getting those through.
So for clarity, so you're saying sprinkler system's required when there's a lockoff unit?
Yeah, 13D system, which is not nearly as robust as a straight 13 system. It's more of a means-of-egress protection system, because when you're transient in nature and and you hear an alarm, you you don't maybe know which way's up, which way's out, what the alarm is. And so this gives you more time, especially if you require mobility devices, to to exit the structure.
So that just points out that there's a lot of it's a residential style construction with sprinklers in them.
Correct. The D the D designates dwelling. Yeah, yes.
Randy, I was just wondering, how many homes did we actually single-family have in 2006? Because I know that was like the top, and then we had the crash. I think my house that I live in was built in like 2005. Is that available, Will, anywhere that you can pull that out? I I know that that's when we were so, it seemed like we were incredibly busy, and I know we're even busier now because they're bigger and more interesting, right?
Yes, I I started with the county in October of 2005, and I remember those times well, because we went from a sprint to to nothing. We fell off that cliff fast. And that was, remember, a financial breakdown, not, I mean, we still have an incredible need for single-family dwellings nationwide, and especially in this area. So as long as the financial system will bear this, we still have a quality of life in central Oregon, where people who are in a position to move here want to be here. And so, other than, you know, some major thing, I I think with the subdivisions we have coming online, we're only going to to grow. And that that kind of brings me to a point that that we do have a couple, a few full-time positions open. We've not had a whole lot of luck on, and we may not be beating the bush as much as we should be, because we're kind of filling our way through this current situation. We have Chris Grassi and I, the Assistant Building Official, worked pretty closely to kind of look at our crystal ball and try to figure out where we're going to be, because as a fee-funded industry, as as you noted in 2006, I was one of the lucky seven out of the 28 that got to remain. So we we go up and down with the industry we serve.
How many positions do you have open right now, just to get it in the record, so in case anyone's watching and wants to move here and have a job?
So when one of our senior inspectors retires on the 20th next month, that will be three positions, one Plans Examiner, two Field Inspectors, one would be for a gentleman we lost as a became a building official in Alaska and took a job up there. We have not filled that position, and and we have not filled our Plans Examiner position you've given us. We also have requested a additional Assistant Building Official position that was approved, and and we are really trying to fill our way through what is what is going to happen. You know, springtime's a good indicator, right? We're starting to get get some ideas of where we're heading. But but we can always trade our exceptional on-time delivery performance measure, because we do have 72 hours, 40 hours to actually make an inspection. We can trade some of that and keep everyone a little a little higher, you know, activity, our inspectors. Some of our programs that that were noted in the in the work plan is a drone program. We are currently conducting a beta test of a drone to see how effective they are to keep our our folks safely on the ground, rather than on roofs or or in in dangerous positions. We see a lot more photovoltaic solar permits than we have like fourfold as many. And in fact, one of my concerns is that we're we're beginning to see more homeowner photovoltaic system installations, which are very complex, and and they take more coordination. We only run our A-level electrical inspectors on those, but these these drones will help keep them off the roof.
I want to go out to some of those inspections. Let's look for that opportunity.
I I'm the same way. I ask my guys, whenever you have an interest, you want, especially with batteries, call me.
Yeah. Well, and I was a salesman in that field 20 years ago, and I'd love to see the technology evolution right now, too.
I will, I will get you out on inspection, Commissioner Devon. We also will be testing our first E vehicle, hopefully this year. I I saw that Ford said they began building them today, or this, I think it was today that actually saw the news. Angie has one on order, and we have one on order. Since I since I was interim building official in 2014, I started the transition from pickup trucks to escapes, which doubled our fleet mileage. And hopefully, by the end of my tenure, we'll either be fully electric, or at least on our way to electric, to reduce our carbon footprint of conducting our our regulatory endeavor. Right now, I'm I've worked with the Road Department and 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 Building Services, and Sherry has been very active, and Finance, because having an E having an E vehicle and how you fuel it was a concern. We found that the one we've ordered has a special program in it that can tell exactly how much electricity it took from what location. Sherry has has coordinated with Finance, and Finance said we can absolutely reimburse for that, so we have a way to do this. And although it is a deluxe cab truck, that's the only type that's offered, its mileage equivalent is 68 miles per gallon, so we're headed the right direction. And and by the way, this is a beta test vehicle. Once the the escapes come out in four-wheel drive electric, then that's probably the direction we'll be moving. Another another item on the horizon, which I'm sure you guys will all start hearing about, which we in the regulatory side for life safety are trying to begin to understand is the psilocybin mushrooms and and what that would entail. So we're trying to stay ahead of that curve, because we do not really understand the level of self-preservation of an individual who's being treated with with that. And so, you know, we're we're working through all the all those, as long as as well as like with the SB 391 rule ADUs, you know, we're we're trying to get some definitions from planning and from your board to help us to negotiate that when that comes, because there's incredible pent-up energy over rule ADUs. And and we're, right now, we're telling everyone, we don't know enough to even let you get started, let's, you know, let's wait. And and so that's where we're where we're at. Pretty much, I've hit my talking points. Is there anything in particular that that, any questions that you'd have?
Randy, I wasn't quite tracking the when you mentioned the the psilocybin mushrooms. Were you talking about people who wanted to produce them and at their at their property, or?
No, no, I don't think it's the I don't I don't believe the production is nearly as concerning to us as as administration and the people who are under the influence of them. You know, just like when you have men's clubs, taverns, restaurants, bars, you have a different level of protection, because people are not as capable of self-preservation as they are when they're, you know, here in this building, for instance. So the occupancy drives the level of protection, and we're trying to to gauge what that would require as as this filters through. This is all brand-new territory.
And and Commissioner, in the first week of June, I think it's June 1st, we're going to have a a work session item on Measure 109 in the psilocybin legislation. And and so this is just one of those elements associated with what's with what's called a service center. But there's a there's a lot to unpack there, and again, we, given our our other responsibilities, that the the plan is to to begin having, I suspect it'll be a couple of work sessions to talk about Measure 109, how it how how it is applying to to the 36 counties in Oregon, and and talk about, you know, approaches to address implementation. So this, what Randy has given you is a bit of a teaser, but there's some some land use issues associated with it, some eligible eligible lands, and then options for elected officials for how they want to proceed. It's it's totally different than Measure 91 with with recreational marijuana. So, yeah, there's there's going to be a lot to discuss and ultimately get some board direction on on how to proceed. But we don't, there'll be, that conversation will start in June.
One more item I'd like to add is that on the 20th of May, in the Armond Room, right right across the hall here, we will be proctoring the fourth year Electrical Apprentices, 16 of them, for their journeyman electrician certification. This is the third time we have done this as the county. We have volunteered our services and our rooms, because the proctoring centers were closed, and we need electricians. And and this also helps, we have really good street cred with our inspectors, because they come from the industry. But this really helps kind of pull the new electricians under the wing and say, hey, you know, we're all a team here. And and this will also be the first the first time since we've been doing it that I've asked the City of Bend to engage with us, and so they will be sending over an electrical, an A-level electrical inspector with our A-level electrical inspector to facilitate that.
As long as we're talking about engaging people, we also had meetings regarding the apprenticeship program and with the plumbers. And truly, there were hardly any plumbers going into the apprenticeship program, and how important it is that we get back to those high schools and talk to young people in high school about options. In fact, yesterday, we were at we were at Caldera High School, and that was one of the comments made to the group of the sophomores that were in the room, you know, the 15, the 16-year-olds, please look at apprenticeships, look at trades. We were told in our meeting that they can make, start at, you know, like $30, 30-plus, mid-30s, an hour for those programs. So...
Absolutely. From concrete work to plumbers, electrical, the entire trades from framers, we are really working hard to interest our youth in this industry and to show them that it's a fast track to a good quality life.
Family wage jobs, truly. And yes, college is not meant for everyone. And so, thank you for bringing that up. And I just think it's so important that we, you know, let our community know.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning. Angie Habner, Administrative Manager. Thank you for having us here today to tell our story. I think this is such a neat opportunity and time spent with you. So, thank you for that. I'm going to be talking to you today about coordinated services and also code compliance. Starting with coordinated services, looking back over our 2021 year, it's just been extraordinary, looking what we went through, 2019, 2021. 2021 specifically was a year where we were trying to stabilize through the pandemic. Took it as an opportunity to assess what we learned for efficiencies, things that we implemented to keep our doors open to the community, and what we should retain from that experience, and to move forward to provide the best customer service that we can. We, with that, we had gone to some online submittals during the pandemic and realized that there are some huge benefits here for that, to help the community learn how to apply online, do reviews throughout our departments in tandem with each other. We have provided classes to people to learn how to do that. We don't want it to be overwhelming. We don't want it to be, have a fear factor of intimidation. We want to keep that customer service. And so, 2021, we started doing that, really reaching out to the public, teaching one-on-one classes for how to apply online. We transitioned for our commercial application submittals to be 100% applied for online with, from professionals. We've had really good reviews from the public and the community. They appreciate the understanding of the why, and also our deep passion for customer service, that they're not in this alone. We are here with them, even though they're applying online. We've got them. We're a team in this effort. We increased our online submittals during the 2021 year to 49.4%. With that, we had closed our satellite offices in City of Sisters and City of Lapine during the pandemic. We reopened those. We are currently, and in 2021 is when we started providing a permit tech assistance down in our sister communities on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We send a permit tech down there one day a week. We've also taught some classes down there, too, as well, for the online submittals. And it's just been received really well. So, really glad to have our satellite offices back open. I think the partnership in our community is wonderful for people, save mileage, driving time. So, we reopened those. During the 2021 year, we also struggled with retention. We lost some employees. We internally promoted some employees from admin positions to permit techs, which is just a phenomenal thing. They take the knowledge that we've taught them. They grow into a permit tech. We were training eight new permit techs during the 2021 year, and we promoted three administrative support techs. In training a permit technician, as you all know, I mean, we get the honor of working with this team up here. The permit techs are, they're cross-trained just enough in all departments to know what experts to bring to the table. With that, it takes significant training for them. Our goal is to, when a community member comes in to community development, they ask us the questions. Our goal is to help them get the answers they need, even if they don't, aren't quite sure to know what to ask. So, we really pour a lot into our permit technicians. The training is extensive. And then, we utilize our team of experts here to provide customer service to our community. We have really evaluated our training process and had a neat thing that came from the pandemic is, previous to that, we had been trained upfront with customers. We were trained front and center. But due to new circumstances that arose, we were able to evaluate, how do we train this role? And we're able to pull back, train in kind of a more classroom setting, back behind the scenes. So, when they're exposed to the public, they're fresh to what they're doing. They know how to work our computer systems. They've seen the questions and know where to get the answers from the community. So, that was a neat thing that we changed in our training process when we were evaluating staff. With that, we continue to realize, as you know, we had a big retirement group from our coordinated services community. And with that, we lost a lot of historical knowledge. So, we realized we needed to create a standard operating procedures for new staff, for succession planning. So, we've been working on that as well. We, I do have to say, I mean, coordinated services, I'm very proud of that, the staff there. During that 2021 year, we were awarded, Jennifer Lawrence was awarded the Oregon Building Officials Association Permit Technician of the Year. And to me, that just shows the dedication of one staff member, but is a representative as a whole of the heart and work efforts that our staff gives to Deschutes County. So, I'm very honored for that and very proud of her. In addition to evaluating staff efficiencies and training, we added the administrative supervisor position that you guys approved, and I'm so grateful for that. Jennifer Lawrence was awarded that position, and it has brought really some strength to our department. We can divide and really move forward that way in her role. 2022, we do currently have 11 permit tech positions and three, I'm sorry, two administrative support positions. We do currently have three open positions for permit techs. So, it has been a challenge in that where our staff is pretty new in their role, and then we have some open positions in a time of pretty high volume. We're doing well. The staff is just doing great. We are going to be trying to recruit for those positions. We have continued to work with HR to evaluate, propose, and implement strategies to be fully staffed, and very thankful for the effort that HR has put into some creative thinking on how can we think out of the box for retaining staff, recruiting staff. A good example of that is we just had a permit technician resign. She was moving to her family to Texas. She's an exceptional employee. We worked alongside HR to creatively think, how can we, how can we keep her working here? So, we, she now is employed through Express Personnel, continuing the permit technician role. She's hit the ground running. And we've found some efficiencies in that, too, with the online transition. She can work, continue to work doing the online applications, phone calls, emails. It's just been an exceptional solution to a potential problem, losing an additional staff member. So, that has been a really neat success.
That was a win-win.
It was a win-win. It absolutely was. She took three weeks off. She moved and hit the ground running, and she starts two hours before we do. And she's just an exceptional employee and has earned the trust of that position, and continues to give her best to Deschutes County. Yeah. Yeah, it was neat, because it took a year for her to be trained. You know, we invest so much into her, and so to keep her in her role has just been a very big accomplishment.
And do you envision that being a long-term structure?
No, I'm not sure. This is kind of a test run to see what direction we're going to go with this. You know, ideally, we'll have staff in the office. That's always our goal. But this is our first time we've done it, that I've been a part of it. And so, I'm anxious to see how it works out and see what the future brings.
Thanks.
We do have a position and a hope that we will be able to get also a lead permit technician that will just bring stability on site. But that, we need experience and staff to do that. So, we're hopeful that that will be coming within a year or two, just to keep that healthy structure of new employees, seasoned employees, supervisors, managers. Brings a really healthy coordinated services. With that, I'll transition to code compliance. Everybody's, I know, I love, I just appreciate the support.
You're the go-to person when we have calls.
Yeah. 2021 was a big year. We were coming in, after the pandemic, we took on a big project to revise the Code Compliance Policy and Procedures Manual. You all were a big part of that, and I appreciate your, with that effort. John Greeley and Dan Smith were employees that invested a lot into that project. And to me, that also shows the value of having seasoned employees, that the knowledge that they have had to undertake that project was just such a benefit. We had 788 new cases received in the 2021 year. Of those, 742 cases were resolved. We undertook the noxious weed program. That noxious weed program, we only had a couple cases last year. We have received two to three this year. So, the season is starting to peak right now. So, that will be seeing more of those, I believe. Safety came up in the 2021 year, where we coordinated with the Sheriff's Office to provide staff with field safety classes, just to really bring a professional awareness to their environment surroundings. And that was just a great partnership with the Sheriff's Office to have those classes, and will continue to do that in the coming years. 22, this year is going to be an exciting year for code compliance. We are really evaluating and analyzing efficiencies. We are looking at how to, cases are assigned, how cases are managed, how we can best, most efficiently work through these cases. We're looking at improving training programs for staff to avoid burnout and ensure exceptional skillset. We're creating an SOP for them for reference. We are also analyzing our communication to the public. I've really been considering how we communicate to the public, how that is received, how we tell our story from the very beginning, from a public outreach perspective. But also, when somebody receives a preenforcement notice in the mail, how do they receive this? How do they read it? How do they interpret it? So, we've been doing some research, interviewed some of the public, interviewed staff, and went through our templates and read through in ways that we can improve the initial communication from code compliance. We evaluated verbiage. Is it, do they understand it? Can they see it? Very clear communication to include photos for reference, if possible. So, we are going to be getting those. The preenforcement notice will be done this week, including the 30-day warning. We implemented and drafted in partnership with legal our voluntary compliance agreement, just to change the verbiage, really be thoughtful in how we're communicating to the public to ensure that the county is covered liability, and also the communication to the public is just very thoughtfully done. What also we have done to ensure efficiencies for code compliance is with the addition of our administrative staff, we have analyzed tasks that they can be assigned, how they can come together as a team for code compliance and take it from the specialists to the administrative staff and just work together efficiently. An example of that is, we brought in the administrative staff to work on onsite maintenance contracts in partnership with Todd Cleveland for Environmental Soils. And then, also, they're analyzing temporary use for planning for medical hardship, and then just utilizing administrative staff for efficiencies to make sure that those don't fall through the cracks, that they're being managed well. We also are evaluating Deputy Conard's role that she's assigned to us to, for code compliance specifically. How can we utilize her to the most efficient levels? She assists us onsite. She accompanies us when we need her to be there. We've initiated her for site visits and gathering evidence. So, that is working really well. What I really appreciate, also with code compliance, some of these cases have gotten so complex. The research is, can take hours or days. We go to the clerks. We go to the assessors. We really gather evidence to make sure we're on a sound path moving forward. We have pivoted a little bit where we're starting to use for efficiency in coordination with planning and permit technicians, that the specialists would be assigned, a permit tech or a planner, to work with the specialist all the way through to compliance, the project. So, that is a benefit to staff. We're not duplicating efforts for research. The community then is assigned one planner, one permit tech, one specialist. So, they know who to talk to to bring their violation into compliance. It can be overwhelming. And so, we're really trying to streamline that for them as well, versus coming into the counter, getting who's at the counter, and having to start over and creating frustration and duplicated efforts. So, that has been an exciting thing that we've started to do, and I'm seeing a lot of benefit from that and appreciation from the community.
How are the majority of compliance cases started? You know, so I know of some phone calls I get and direct connections, but I mean, it's not 100. So, you said 700-something?
Yeah. So, those can be one property with multiple violations. So, those numbers are not necessarily...
Okay, not individual. Okay, got it.
But we get them from a variety. We get them from inside staff. If we see inspectors in their daily line of duties go out and see a failing septic system or work done without permits. And then, mostly community member submittals. Sheriff's Office does submit submittals if it's a fire life safety, very egregious, solid waste issue. So, they come from a variety of...
So, okay, yeah. So, citizens know to go to the website and figure out how to start a complaint or do the process.
About 30% of our complaints come from Sheriff's Office staff. The rest comes from the community.
Okay, good. No, that's good to understand. Thank you.
We are updating, in the process of updating our website. So, when they submit complaints, we are upgrading it so they can pinpoint the address on the map. In case they don't know the address, they can find it and mark it. It ensures that it's in our county. And then, we're also going to be updating it for frequently asked questions, if they have that as well.
Thank you.
So, Angie, the trend line actually looks like it's going down from 19. Is it, okay, we're in a couple months, almost to May 1st. Is it still continuing down that trend line?
It was until this week.
Till yesterday, huh? Oh, gosh.
Now, I'm starting to see it increase again. But, well, I don't know if we just had a busy week, but it was, it was going down. We kind of contemplated why, why that is, but...
Weather just broke.
Weather broke. People are back to work maybe from being home, and they're not at home looking, seeing what's going on, or, I don't know why. But I do see a spike just in the last week or two, that they're starting to increase again.
Okay. Because it, you know, at least the trend was looking better.
Yeah, it was. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll see.
I don't know. Did you guys read the story about the mom who was homeless with her children because of that septic system?
We did.
Okay, so, it was brought to me, what is it Deschutes County can do to help that woman get back in her...
Absolutely. So, she is, we've given her resources for Craft 3 and Neighbor Impact.
Okay.
She's currently working with both of those to see how they can help her get some means to get, she needs a new... She's currently working with both of those to see how they can help her get some means to get, she needs a new septic system.
She needs a new one. And, and what is the cost of a new system then? Do we have any idea?
Thirty thousand.
It could be because of the complexities of that site and that neighborhood and all the stuff on the property. It could end up being a very complicated, expensive system.
So we're talking like thirty thousand? Thirty thousand.
It could be, I'm gonna, you know, we'll see. I have not evaluated the property. We've been trying to get this for probably two years at least, right?
Yeah, we've given her the resources that we're aware of, and, and we're always continuing to look for resources for community to, to provide, because it does come into play, finances and so.
Well, I, I know that a very generous person in the community wrote a check for a hundred thousand for the Veterans Village. So you never know who's gonna hear the message and, you know, maybe step up if Neighborhood Impact can't. But truly, we need to get that family back in their home.
Thank you for bringing that case up.
No, I just, you know.
Appreciate it.
No, I appreciate you guys.
I mean, more broadly, we have, we have a program to invest in septic upgrades in South County. And we know, Angie mentioned Craft Three. Craft Three helps to run a, like a Puget Sound wide program up in, in Washington State. And there are many of those programs have been driven by, you know, groundwater quality concerns. But I mean, there's, there's nothing that would preclude us from thinking about starting, starting to do something like that that is, has a goal in part to maintain affordable housing stock in our community.
Would love to.
To make certain kinds of investments in properties to keep them from basically.
I can speak to that a little bit. So Craft Three, the legislature did give Craft Three through DEQ two million dollars to create clean water loans, which are intended for septic systems that are having problems that are twenty-five years old or in, you know, in failure. They can get connection costs to connect to sewer, like septic to sewer as well. That's a fairly, they finally just got that going again. So it was, there was a period of time where they didn't have funding. Now they have some funding and there is a local office, and we have some fresh handouts that we've just been sending out to people. So that's, that's coming on, and it's in Oregon now. So Deschutes County has quite a number of those.
And that two million dollars, is that, is that for them to deploy statewide or in specific areas?
That's in Oregon, yeah. All over the state.
Not a lot of money statewide.
No.
I mean, so, but, but I mean, just to kind of dovetail with that, I mean, there's, there's, there's program structures in place. I mean, we could literally, I think, consider making a, a county scale investment in a program like that, you know, with the strings, you know, the, the sideboards that, you know, you only use our money in Deschutes County.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you for always responding to my emails. I, I, I'm always so amazed at your department, everyone in your department. You guys have such high standards and as far, you live in, you live them every day, so thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Sherry Pinner. I'm the analyst for community development, and my focus are financial and performance management. And I can confirm that in calendar year twenty twenty-one, we had exceptional permit volumes. They ranged anywhere from twenty, twenty percent to a thirty percent increase and a fifteen percent increase on applications received for single-family dwellings. Commissioner Adair, I don't have the two thousand and six totals in front of me, but what I can tell you is I think two thousand and six, seven, and eight, we really started that decline for the Great Recession. Two thousand and nine, there were a hundred and twenty-five single-family dwellings permitted. That kind of turned around in twenty fourteen, fifteen. That's when we consider ourselves sort of climbing out of the Great Recession. And as Randy mentioned, in twenty twenty-one, we had seven hundred and seventy-five. So that is on a calendar year basis. And so as we approach the budget cycle, right, I start looking at permitting volumes on a fiscal year basis. And what's, what the trend that's becoming apparent is that fiscal year twenty-two is going to be a little bit of a decrease from fiscal year twenty-one, yet still higher than fiscal year twenty. Now, we also know that we've got developments in South County, we've got developments in Sisters, and of course Thornburg's out there in the, in the horizon. So we know that we have developable properties. What is unclear to me is whether we're going to continue with supply shortages and maybe labor shortages and those sort of challenges. But again, I think fiscal year twenty-two will be higher than twenty, but slightly lower than twenty-one. Also on our staffing, in calendar year twenty twenty-one, we welcomed fourteen new staff members. We internally promoted eleven, so we have quite a few of our staff who are, you know, becoming trained in their jobs. We had ten vacant positions at the end of December, and we're currently sitting at, at eight. So we have three in building safety, three permit technicians in coordinated services, two in planning, which I do believe we have applicants, and we'll be looking at those fairly closely, so hopefully those will get filled soon. Our performance management really has been very stable, and that, I think, is a direct result of the commitment from management team as well as line service staff who are really committed to providing the services. And it's, it's, I'm, I'm very proud of the, the work we've done during the pandemic. We started fiscal year twenty-two with sixty-five FTE. We currently are sitting at seventy, so we've added five throughout the fiscal year, and then we're going to request two more during the fiscal year twenty-three budget cycle. And, you know, we're constantly looking at ways to create efficiencies in the, in our processes. I work really closely with Tim and looking at our, sort of what we're focusing on right now is our permit turnaround times and what are the variables there that maybe we can improve and shorten those. So, so know that we're looking at those, you know, consistently. I don't know if you have any questions on.
Well, and, you know, the comments remind me that, yeah, the, I hear it all the time, you know, the builders are happy to come and work with Deschutes County. I mean, that's the big picture here, so knowing our numbers is very valuable, knowing our turnaround times, and looking for those efficiencies is appreciated by all. And we have the track record of, you know, being the premier service community, for our community.
Yeah, and, and you're probably aware that we have a monthly meeting with the Central Organ Builders Association, and we certainly listen to all of their comments, their questions, and take their advice on ways to improve. And, you know, I really rely on them a lot to point us to areas that could be improved and really appreciate their feedback.
Yeah, great.
Sure, you mentioned two requests coming in the budget cycle. Can you give us a preview of what, what kind of positions those will be, or?
Absolutely. So we're going to request an additional assistant building official. The current building official has, has quite a heavy load on staff that he supervises. And so we're looking to sort of lighten that load a little bit, create two teams, sort of a field inspection team, and then have a, kind of a assistant building official over the plan review team. And, you know, we're also, within the department, looking broadly at succession planning. So over the next six to eight years, we're going to have eleven percent of our staff turn over based on length of service only, not age-related. So, you know, so, so we're trying to take a broad view. The second position is going to be an additional principal planner, which is really a supervisory role in the current planning division. Our current principal planner has, I believe, either ten to twelve direct reports. And so we're going to, and, and those staff are very young in their length of service with CDD. So, so, you know, primarily all of them are in training. And so we're looking to create sort of two teams to lighten that load and give more attention to the training piece, get people up to speed quicker.
And having these pre-approved positions for my division helps us stay nimble in an industry that is, has so many ups and downs. So I really appreciate that.
And Commissioners, I'll just offer that Randy and I have discussed the second building, assistant building official for a number of years, just wondering when would be the right time to request that position for all the reasons that you've already described. So this has been something we've discussed for many years.
And myself and Chris Garcia are long-time assistant building official, work very closely in this. We're, we've been a management team since, really since I began my building official duties.
Sherry, could I just ask you, how many empty positions are for the entire department at this moment in time?
Eight.
Eight, okay. All right, I did get it down, three, three, and two, right? Like, oh, okay. Just wanted to be sure. And that's gone down from what, thirteen? Wasn't that maybe our maximum at some point?
Quite possibly. You know, we, we've had a lot of turnover. I know at the end of December it was around ten. There have been moments where we were probably up to around fourteen or fifteen. You know, in, in this calendar year, we've hired a handful. We've also had a handful leave. You know, so it's, you know, of, of course, I'm hoping for some stability in calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Definitely. Thank you.
All right, so I'll go next. Todd Cleveland, Environmental Soils Division, do the onsite wastewater management. Septic systems. So to stick with the theme, right, we did eighteen hundred and forty-six permits. That's, I, I don't know what the number was in two thousand and six. I was here in two thousand and six, and it was pretty phenomenal. But I think it could have been every bit as busy last year for us. And we had, you know, you had the COVID, you had COVID issues, we had turnover in staff, we had a retirement. So we've expanded our team. You guys gave us another position. Right now I have two trainees that we're working to get everybody up to speed. My two staff that have been there are just fantastic. They, they are so dedicated to trying to provide good service. You know, the, the stress I saw in them last year, hopefully we won't see that again. You know, we're gonna keep, get, get everybody trained up. We're gonna look at ways of organizing. The E-permitting system, we've expanded that use, and I think that that's really been valuable. There may be times where, you know, we do a lot of outreach to the installers. I've spent time explaining to installers how to do things electronically. And so hopefully, they will see that efficiencies that, that are built in. It's a lot easier to submit paperwork from the back of your, your pickup cab than it is having to drive all the way into Bend, right? So some of the, the installers have embraced that significantly in South County or in the Sisters area in particular. We see that, that, I never see them in person anymore. So hardly ever. So it's kind of strange, but that's been a really good, a good thing. We're gonna continue to try to expand that. Going forward, get everybody trained up, get them educated. But in, in addition to that, we've got a lot going on with South County. We're gonna be coming back and meeting with you probably in about two weeks with DEQ to discuss some of the South County issues. We've got development going on in the, the new neighborhood where we're gonna get some groundwater protection funds. We may need to explore some expansion of those financial assistance programs or, or looking into how we deal with that. You know, the groundwater issues, we're gonna, DEQ's planning a sampling event. We have ongoing things with South County. It's a very complex issue, which Commissioner DeBones is pretty aware of over his tenure here. So, you know, that, that continues, and it's gonna continue after I'm here, you know, after I'm gone. So I'm trying to build a team that understands all the, all these issues, and I'm learning that that's very complex as well, so.
Todd, when did you start with Deschutes County?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay, so you have a tremendous history then.
Yes, and I worked on that Lapine project, so I'm the one, I'm the one left over. Peter and I are still here from that.
Yeah. Is it any clarity on accessory dwelling units and the triggers that that's gonna put in place, just kind of the rule of thumb upfront?
So the, the biggest issue there is most septic systems are sized for one single-family residence on these properties, not two. So when we start doing these accessory dwelling units, they're not going to have capacity onsite with the existing systems typically. So we have flexibility in either expanding the existing system that serves both dwellings or looking at separate dwellings. The concern is, is that our sites have become more complicated. As people try to intensify these uses on these small parcels, it becomes more and more complicated to find a suitable area to make sure that there's long-term service for the property with a, a system. So, you know, it's not always easy. It's sometimes very difficult even with one hand, one house on a property. So ADUs are gonna be a lot of work for us.
Have you had anybody come to you and asking about it already in preparation?
Oh, yeah. So there's, there's ways in which if somebody's doing an accessory structure that's not a dwelling, that we've done some separate systems, and they may upsize that system. There's nothing limiting to that if the, if the lot can handle it. So we have a few of those where we've done site evaluations and new permits that have a system that's serving a bathroom in a shop that at some point in the future may become an accessory dwelling. Once all the rules are passed, and they'll have to go through a process, but, you know, we'll have to authorize that change. But they've upsized their system for that use.
That'll be quite a flurry of activity coming your way.
Yes, and it's kind of scary to think about.
I mean, Todd, are you thinking that, because they set up two acres as the minimum amount for an ADU to be on, are you thinking in South County that we're going to have to raise that? I mean, is that something you want to talk about at this moment?
I would say, well, I mean, that would be something that we would discuss through that process, right? But I do have concerns about South County because it's an area of groundwater concern, and it's based on, basically, we already know that there's too many existing dwellings dumping sewage into the ground, right? It's being treated to the best of our ability, but it's not sufficient, based on the densities that exist, to sustain the, the quality of water that we have in South County. So in order to protect that resource, we really have to be careful about how many systems go in the ground, how many dwellings there are, and at what densities they're, they're, they're approved at. So that two-acre minimum may not be sufficient in South County, depending on the circumstances. And there's a lot of geologic, hydrogeologic data that supports, you know, that gives us some guidance on that. That's, that takes hours probably to explain to everyone, but it's gonna be a complicated process. But that area is gonna be an area of concern.
Well, that may be a topic we can bring up earlier than later, too. You know, because that's gonna be our, our discussion about implementing state law in Deschutes County. Yeah, so just setting more of a runway for that discussion may be very valuable.
I know, I had a system like that, and the lights were always flashing, and I was always having to call someone to come fix the system. So I understand what you're saying. It's, you know, it's incredibly complicated.
So, yes, and so the systems, we have about thirteen hundred in the O and M program right now. That grew by a hundred and eighty last year. So, you know, out of the eighteen hundred permits, you can, you can see how, you know, that's about ten percent of the permits, which is, tells a, 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 a story in itself that the complexity of systems that we're seeing, the, the difficulty of sites. That includes areas all over the county, not just South County. Based on information that I'm told, and I was talking to a service provider before I came over here this morning, that ninety percent of these systems perform extraordinarily well. However, and they do, we do a great deal of information, you know, trying to provide information to property owners about how to take care of those systems. And some of the, the, the property owners don't know what they're supposed to do or what not to do. And so they have a lot of more, more servicing on some of those systems. Over time, these systems have become very robust, very reliable. I don't see a great deal of problems, given the number that we have in Deschutes County. You know, we have the most in the state. So that, that includes Clackamas County. So Clackamas has quite a few. Lincoln County has quite a few, coastal areas do. But with the densities and the limitations of sites, we're seeing many more of the alternative treatment systems.
So are you, when you say ninety percent are, are performing extraordinarily well, are you talking about South County?
All over.
All over the county.
That was what, that's what the service provider said off the top of his head. That was this morning, literally.
Well, that's good to hear. So we, we need to worry about the ten percent then?
And generally, from my perspective, our, our compliance rates in that ninety-two to ninety-five percent rate. Now, one of the issues with that is the, the, the fact that people have been selling their properties pretty rapidly in Deschutes County, and the owners don't always know that they're buying a system like that, right? So we're, we're having some hiccups with our, our communications. We send a lot of emails to the service providers. We send a lot of letters to property owners. I think sometimes property owners get something from Deschutes County and they, they, it goes in the, the circular file or the recycle. from Deschutes County, and they, it goes in the circular file or the recycle bin or whatever. But, you know, we're doing, we're trying to find ways to reach out to the public when, and let them know that they're buying a property with one of these advanced systems.
Have we, have we recruited the Realtors Association to help us with that?
That was part of our discussion this morning with the service provider. We have had meetings at the core office over here. I've been there. I've been to different offices in the past. This service provider was going to reach out because his sister is, is a Realtor. So they were going to try and reach out and reconnect with Realtors again, because there's such a trans, you know, such a turnover of all of these things from properties to the industry. And we've had kind of a two-year hiatus here where people haven't seen each other, and they might not be thinking about this kind of stuff. So we're trying to think about ways to reach out to people.
Well, and just in life experience, you know, where I grew up as a kid, and our first house, and our second, second house, and now where I live now, and I never knew where the water came from or where, where it went when you flushed the toilet. Now I know all about it. But it's interesting, you know, as, there's points in your life where you just don't know. It doesn't matter. It's working, and everything's fine. But, yeah, for septic systems in the rural counties, especially with the development pressure and these accessory dwelling units, there'll be a whole wave of engagement and activity and education coming.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. I, so as an environmental health person, right, as an environmental health specialist, I always think that we very frequently take for granted, you know, you can walk up and open the faucet and take a drink of water, and you flush your toilet, and you don't think about it. That just tells you that, how much is going on behind the scenes of all this infrastructure and, and sustainable work that's being done by people in the environmental health field. I'm talking about Health Department as well.
Well, thank you very much for what you're doing out there.
As we're looking towards a bunch of those rural ADUs coming online, I'm just trying to, if there was a, like, common situation versus uncommon situation, I'm trying to get a sense of whether it's more likely that, it's more likely that expansion of an existing septic system is going to be the easier, cheaper pathway, or development of a new one, or whether it's just, it's going to be very, very site-dependent and...
Very site-dependent. One of the things, as I've been training the, the trainees, you know, it's, it's, there's, nothing is like black and white. It's like a complex flow chart, right, that, that's like, well, if this happens, then you've got to go there. And if this happens, you go there. So every site is unique, every use is unique. Our properties and uses have become more and more complex over time. So it's, it's hard to give just a straight answer in those circumstances. I tend to give people some pretty, you know, pretty strong answers to begin with. And if we go out and we find a good solution, they just get, they get the happy news, right? But I make sure that people have a heads up that this could be pretty expensive and complicated.
And I would just offer that this is not a foreign issue to Todd and your team, because this issue exists currently in Southeast Bend, where those properties are already on septic system. As they begin to transition those to sewer, I know you, you've encountered these questions for a long time.
We coordinate a lot with the city. So we deal with these daily. And it's becoming a, a big issue, and it's really not feasible in the city of Bend if you're on a waste, onsite system to do an ADU. You have to have sewer, because the lots are too small.
Great. So that, that may, it may have implications for, you know, how we, you know, one of the pieces that we're going to need to figure out for, with the rural ADUs is, is whether a hundred feet is the corner, or like the whole footprint, or, you know, within a hundred feet. You know, if we need more space to create new parallel septic systems to the, to the original, then that kind of, that might push us towards more space than less space.
And we, we can't change that hundred, can we? Because I've had several calls from people that perhaps might have an illegal one, and it's actually like a hundred and fifty-six feet from, you know, the house. So we're set in stone with that hundred, isn't it? Because that's an alleged...
That puts in the bill.
Yes.
There's a question, there's a question about how to measure that. You know, do both structures have to entirely fall with a, within a hundred-foot circle? Or does there have to just be each structure touch, you know, that hundred-foot circle at some point? So that's a, that's something that the legislature, legislature left uninterpreted that we'll be working with.
And in the building codes for fire and life safety, measurement between structures, it is face-to-face. So there's conflagration, you know, distances. It's not entire building distances. And it's actually measured in a right angle because of BTU release.
Okay.
And so what do, what do those, what do those guidelines drive us towards in terms of distance?
So we have a...
Move the mic over just in case. This is good information.
So we have a definition for fire separation distances, which is referenced a lot in, in other chapters of the code. And that's, different occupancies have to be farther apart due to conflagration. And you can have a certain amount of perforations, openings, the farther away it is. If it's, if it's a lot closer, they have to be solid or rated walls. But that distance is always a hundred-foot face-to-face, or a hundred-foot to the nearest property line, you know, things that are, but building to building, it is face-to-face.
And distance is safety, and a little bit farther distance is better, so a structure doesn't start the next one on fire?
Correct. And we have a table that gets us through all that, you know, but, but the defining thing is that the measurement is taken face-to-face.
And within incorporated cities, those distances are much smaller because they have fire hydrants, or?
Well, quite frankly, our distances, we're a uniform code state, so our distances are all the same for life safety. For setbacks to, to property lines and stuff, the building codes are usually trumped by local planning codes. For instance, my building code and rule says you can be three feet off a property line. There's no way that planning would allow us to build three feet off of a property line. And that's, you know, that's, for the rule areas, they, they keep us, for instance, non-farm dwellings or something like that, a hundred, a hundred feet away. I mean, there's, there's from desk considerations to, to my, my areas, conflagrations, you know, but there's a lot of set, different setback requirements. As we know, South County, we had some, a subdivision wanting to narrow that, and a fire chief that, that didn't want them to narrow it, especially if they were going to allow two-story structures with ventilated roofs. Because as you build up, you have more potential for fires to go from structure to roof-to-neck structure to structure.
This'll all get, this'll all get woven into our SB three ninety-one work, work, work process. Okay. Thank you.
Great.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm up next. Will Groves, again, your planning manager. And it's an exciting year for us, lots of changes. You know, there's now nineteen FTE in the Planning Division. We've got two of those open, a senior and a, and an associate that we're, that we're recruiting for, hopefully get some people in those positions. And we really survived the past year in part with some on-call planners. So luckily, some of our former employees are still in the area, and we're able to help out with some of our files. There were some, there were some tight moments there during the year, making sure we had enough bodies to get the work done. But luckily, you know, our core team, of course, Peter, myself, Anthony Ruggini, we've all been there for, you know, a decade and a half. And so having that resiliency and stability at the top really helped us in training and keeping it together with a lot of new staff. You know, the overwhelming majority of our staff has been in their current position less than a year. And there's a, there's a lot of training to be done. And at the same time, we've made excellent hires. It's great to hear that from both the public and from our internal CDD members, that, you know, we've got good people doing good work. So we're really optimistic about the direction that it's going, and that our investment in training has really paid off. We've, you know, we went from, when I was hired in two thousand and four, I was handed a copy of the code, an example of a couple of decisions, and told good luck. And now, you know, we have, we have the PowerPoints, we have standard operating procedures.
Now you're running the show.
Yeah. And that's, and that's why.
Definitely.
Yeah. So it's just, it's great. And especially, I want to give a shout out here to Anthony Ruggini, who has a passion for training. And it really, it's, it's amazing what that does to have somebody who cares that much about staff. He's a, he's a tough trainer, but, you know, when the staff gets to talk to me privately, they say they appreciate somebody that interested in their professional development. So he's a core member of our team, and we really appreciate it. You know, Sherry mentioned, you know, we're going to be looking to, asking the board as part of the budget process for another principal planner. And that's something we could really use to help keep the team together, especially running a greener team, as it seems, it seems like we have a pretty easy time hiring entry positions and retaining people who already have homes in the community. But it's those positions where people typically would come with a young family, you know, the senior position, we're having trouble getting recruits for. So it may be that we need to run a bi-modal team of, you know, veterans and really green recruits. And that position will help us a lot in that regard. Of course, we're the primary interface between our community and the local and state planning system. And customer service is really important to us. That was emphasized when I got here in two thousand and four, and that culture has been maintained. And we're here to be the ambassadors, both, you know, helping people get through a permit system, helping them understand what's required, but also helping them believe that it's a fair system that makes sense and that takes their needs into consideration. And so we spend a lot of time interacting with people. And we had over five thousand cumulative emails and phone calls last year that we responded to people. And our, just our commitment to clear communication, I think, has really helped us over the years and continues to help us. We received one thousand eighty-nine land use applications, and that's a twenty-five percent increase over the prior year. So a major increase in the amount of workflow that's coming through, both in terms of the calls, the applications, and also the complexity. So we had twenty land use applications go to a hearings officer, and that was an increase over fifteen from the prior year. So fifteen in twenty twenty, twenty in twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-one, and twenty applications going to a hearings officer in, now I've got that all backwards, there's too many twenties. Twenty last year, fifteen the year before.
There you go.
Yes. And of course, the board, you've, there were sixteen quasi-judicial land use hearings compared to fourteen in twenty twenty. Lots of appeals heard by the board. You know, of course, the campgrounds, you'll recall, hydroelectric facilities, reconsideration of the, of the tentative plat, you know, lots of Thornburg matters in front of you. So we appreciate you being our, our, our Board of Last Appeal here locally. Lots of interactions there between you and planning staff. We also did a number of plan amendment zone changes. You know, these are more complicated files where people are looking to change out of one zone into another. We had one for exclusive farm use near Twenty-seventh Street, another one out by the Bend Airport. And you also helped us with a text amendment to clarify slope setbacks in the West Side transect zone. Of course, you heard about today, we initiated a request for a proposal for our comprehensive plan update. I won't go into that too much detail, other than that that's a really exciting opportunity for community outreach. And I think we're really ready for it. The, I think the community has, the interests have changed over time in some important ways. It'll be interesting to see what people emphasize now as opposed to, you know, in twenty eleven. Legislative amendments. So of course, one of the things that we work with you on is updating our code. A number of legislative amendments adopted, including updates to the guest ranch and subdivision road standards. Housekeeping amendments, of course, that you worked with Kyle on to keep our code tuned up. Marijuana housekeeping to reflect the latest changes there. Some changes to the way we approach marijuana retail and annual inspections. Those West Side transect amendments that we talked about. Of course, the Planning Division manages a number of grants, including a certified local government grant for the Historic Landmarks Commission. We also got some technical assistance grants and transportation growth management grants that we'll talk about a little bit. As we look into twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, I just, I want to highlight the fact that, you know, we've got, of course, we have statutory obligations and current planning to make sure that all of our applications are processed with the, within the hundred-and-fifty-day period. And the, our ability to hit that target with confidence is improving as we have more staff. You know, we definitely, it was, it was a little threadbare there in the middle of last year, and your support, getting us that extra staff, has really made a big difference in terms of our ability to respond dynamically to applications. Of course, in addition to the comprehensive plan update, we're rolling out a localized community update to Tumalo. And so that's, coming up on May eleventh, we'll be out there in the gym in Tumalo to talk to the community in the broadest sense about how they'd like to see their community grow or not. The last time we visited them, they were very interested in maintaining a small-town feel. And now, you know, with the possibility of sewer, I think that there's, it'll be, I suspect there'll be really strong voices on both sides between Tumalo staying very much the way it is and seeing it grow significantly. So I think that'll be a dynamic process, but it's one we're ready for. You know, difficult community conversations, or why this department exists. If everything was easy, we could go home. So...
Or you could work thirty-two hours a week.
Or work in the trades.
Or how about sixty hours a week? Yes, I know.
Might have a future as a plumber. I'm pretty good under it. So also, working a lot on natural resource issues. So natural hazards, you know, thinking about Senate Bill seven sixty-two about wildfire hazards and mitigation, that'll be coming up to you towards the end of the year, as that works its way through its state-level processes. Wildlife inventories, of course, will be coming to you in relatively short order with the mule deer inventory update that we've talked about and given you some updates about. Also elk and eagle are on that list of updates of inventories that would tentatively come your way.
Oh, I might mention that today's nugget, the Sisters' Nugget, has the article about the wolves. So in the Montolius Basin. So it was on the front page. Yes.
Yeah. See those species come back into, into the county.
Truly.
Sage grouse, of course, participating on coordination with our federal partners on sage grouse issues. The, you know, in addition, that transportation growth management. So we got some money from ODOT to both improve transportation in Tumalo, specific to multimodal transportation, making sure that buses, sidewalks, bicycle infrastructure is correct. And that, that's happening in parallel with our broader community outreach there. In addition, Sisters' Trail out of the Sisters' Country Vision Action Plan, there was an interest in seeing a regional trail network connect in that area. And so we'll be working with our federal partners as well to get our transportation plan, system plan updated to, to identify those trails that the community wants and needs. Finally, you know, of course, we, we have in-house transportation planning that we do, Peter Russell leading that effort. And the transportation system plan is being updated. And, you know, kind of finishing that with a bang here, we, we ran into an issue in the past year that when properties start to be developed, and there's a number of them out, a spur row that isn't named, that for addressing purposes, coordination, fire, life, safety, it's important that the road have a, have a name. And so we're working through a process where we'll ask our transportation planner to periodically come forward to you and say, hey, we've got a road, we've got three people living on it, it's time for it to have its own name, let's run that process. In the past, that's generally been done as an applicant-initiated process, but for some of these, where we're just realizing over time that these developments have happened on fairly remote roads, and so we want to coordinate those better. So those are really the highlights I wanted to hit. Of course, we, I think we see you more than the other divisions, and I think you have more of a pulse of what planning does. But certainly, if you have any questions. Oh, you know what I didn't touch on? Of course, ADUs that we talked about so much today. We'll be back in front of you shortly to talk about those as well, making sure that both the wildfire inventories that we're tracking and the, the building code updates are something that we're coordinating with you throughout this year. That's a major project that you'll be seeing us with.
Commissioners, thank you for, for giving us the soft ninety minutes. We know your time is important. And the, the public hearing on May eleventh, we'll just focus on the work plan. My colleagues, your colleagues here, will, will let them get back into their, their routine. But we'll emphasize, I'll, I'll be emphasizing the work plan. It'll be, still be a short PowerPoint presentation. And then, to the extent that there's members of the public to provide public testimony, of course, that's, that's welcome. So that hearing, again, is, is in two weeks. And as staff wraps up, and we can field any last-minute questions that you may have, I just want to acknowledge from everyone, I think you heard it from each individual manager, this, how appreciative we are of the support that you've given us. And from staffing to just moral support, giving input on our, you know, budgetary matters, we, we really, really appreciate it. And, you know, one of the things that the Commission did relatively recently was you, you allowed us to, to close our doors, not our operations, but to close our doors at four o'clock. And it has allowed Angie's team, Randy's team, Todd's team, Will's team, to use that hour to contact people who have, you know, submitted plans or have, you know, provided emails or phone messages. That hour that's relatively uninterrupted is, just provides incredible period of productivity. So we greatly appreciate that, and I, I look... And I, I look, as I look down the line, I think we're, 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 we just really honor that approach to allow us to stay on top of the customer demands. Because while the numbers may be showing we're not as high as 2021, but we're ahead of 2020, the, the inquiries, I would dare say are as high as ever. And I don't see that going away, regardless of what our economy, you know, does over time. There's just tremendous interest in our region. And the level of complexities, as, as Todd noted, are, are constant. And so we need to have the time to, to do the research and engage our customers and our constituents in a way that allow them to make informed decisions. So thank you for that.
No, but I want to thank you for following our lead and having our meetings. We've been trying to meet in person through COVID, you know, spaced and everything, but we, but I so appreciate your office being open because you know there's still offices in this country that are not open, and you can call and you can leave a message and you can wonder if you're ever going to get a call back. But truly, I am so proud of, you know, all the teams in Deschutes County because they recognize that we are here to serve the people of Deschutes. And I really think you, you truly all do an outstanding job. So I know it was, it was, you know, it was scary, it was frightening at times, but somehow we managed to get through it. And truly want to thank you for, each and every one of you for being there for the public. So, you know, it's great when you actually answer the phone or you, you know, or the door's open. I mean, so thank you, thank you.
Yeah, a big thank you for myself also. And I do have just one note. I highlighted an item for the projects of the, the work plan, so now I'm going to get down to the business of it before we go. Just to mention it, so item number nine talks about revisit radio tower regulations. And I know that, you know, Will was up to speed on this, but I call it amateur radio, not ham radio. And also, I think it may be a simple, like, there's an expectation that there's a height limit on residential property, and there's a reference to getting FAA approval for this tower. So I think we might have mixed up cell tower discussions with this, this standard, not, not very high tower in somebody's backyard. So as I say, it might be as simple as just referencing two different things instead of trying to put them all together. So I just wanted to kind of say that in a public meeting so we can set pace to it. As I say, I don't think it's too complicated because some of it's an outright use that just defines what an amateur radio is. But I'm looking forward to, yeah, getting this published, really, think about if, if the, the community at large got to see what just happened for the last hour and a half. I mean, some great pride in what we're offering. We know we're doing great customer service. And people come in pretty wound up sometimes. They're like, hey, we're here to help. We are here to help. So just get that out there. That's the culture, what we're doing.
If we are circling back on this and looking at specific items, I did, I did want to ask about the sage grouse coordination item. This is, I mean, here in Deschutes County, we are on the fringe of the important areas of interest for the state for this, for this habitat issue. So I, I just wanted to make sure that this kind of trying to participate in those statewide discussions isn't going to consume a lot of time because I, I don't, it's not that it's not an important issue, I just don't think that is relevant enough in Deschutes County to, to justify spending a lot of staff time on it. So can you speak a little bit about what that, what, what, what that entails, that coordination?
I'd be happy to, Commissioner Chang. The Bureau of Land Management reached out to the Board of County Commissioners, to administration, acknowledging that they're amending their resource management plans to demonstrate that they're continuing to address the conservation of sage grouse, which is currently listed as a candidate species under the Endangered Species Act. It's not listed. I think everyone wants to do everything in their power not to have it listed because of the impacts that it would have socioeconomically in, in, in our most rural section of our county, but how it would impact eastern Oregon. I don't think it's going to be a, a huge time sink. I mean, the coordination, the, the board was a cooperating agency with, with, with the spotted frog and the habitat conservation plan. And so, you know, I think the, the board's expectations are to get debriefed on, as those plans are evolving or there's input on socioeconomic demographic issues. I know that one commissioner was, was interested in ensuring that we, we have a role at the table. I, in prior experience, the resources that Deschutes County has compared to our, our peers in eastern Oregon is, is, is so significant that I think that there's some synergy and multiplier effects that, that, that Deschutes County can offer, even if it's just in providing some basic level review that aids our, our colleagues in Harney and Malheur and Lake Counties. But certainly to, if, if there was a circumstance where it was consuming more time, just as I mentioned in some of my opening remarks, we would come back to the board and we would let you know and, and determine how you would want to prioritize our collective responsibilities. But as it stands right now, I think it's something that, that a member of Will's team can, can, can monitor and track and give Advent and the board regular updates as they're needed.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, we have more capacity. I agree, it's an important issue statewide, but I, I, just based on where the Lex are, we are a really marginal player in this, in this issue. And, and I, I wouldn't want us to see, I, I wouldn't want to see us spending a whole lot of time on this. And, you know, I looked to the next page, the, you know, these lower priority items, like, there are a lot of things on this list that I think are really important. And, you know, if we were spending a ton of time on the sage grouse, which is of marginal relevance to Deschutes County, and ignoring these other things, I would have concerns about the way that we are allocating human resources.
Oh, I just have a silly question. On the budget summary, we have the same number for 2020 and 2021. And I thought that was kind of unusual. Did we, did we actually do that? Do you, do you happen to remember, Nick? And when I went back to my budget book for 2020, it was actually.
You're looking on page 10?
I think so. Yes, page 10.
We can.
The, the draft you're looking at must have been printed prior to our submitting fiscal year 23 budgets. So the fiscal year 23 budget, you are correct, is 13.9?
Right, no, but my question was 20 and 21 are the same number?
Yep.
I didn't really, I went to my book, and, and then I'm thinking like.
That would be an oversight.
Okay, all right. Okay, because, yeah, thank you.
Good catch.
Well, we want it to be perfect when it comes, it's all done, right? No, thank you so much, though, truly, guys.
Thank you very much.
You, you're an amazing team. Thank you, Peter, for your leadership. So, okay, it says lunch recess, and then we come back this afternoon? So are, are we good to do that? I think we have something else that we need to do now.
Do we, do we mind to do a couple of other items, or are we?
Well, we're actually supposed to go upstairs now with the presentation for the staff, to thank them, the flowers and everything. They wanted us to do it at this time, is what Whitney had asked me.
11:30?
Okay, Stephanie, we will recess until 1:00. Janice, you're here.
Recording stopped.
Good afternoon. We would love to reconvene our meeting at this moment in time. We do have on our agenda now other items. Commissioners, is there something you would like to bring up?
Couple of quick things to share. This Friday and Saturday, there will be a learning, early learning conference. Coordinated by COCC at the COCC campus. I'm going to be speaking on a panel on Saturday after lunch about advocacy. Also just wanted to mention again that the Board of Forestry is here in Deschutes County these couple of days. They're meeting just the other side of Highway 97 right now in their kind of regular board meeting format, indoor format. And there'll be a field trip tomorrow. It should be a really exciting field trip in a lot of ways. They're, you know, they're going to be showcasing the great work that we're doing in our community on many fronts. From the use of fire resilient building materials and practices at Miller Tree Farm to collaborative forest restoration work on the Deschutes National Forest to some of the, you know, private land work that will be supported by $6.2 million through SB 762 landscape resiliency funding and many other things that are happening here. So would just encourage my fellow commissioners, anyone who's watching, to, to track what's happening with the Ward of Commissioners. There's also a, a reception this evening over at OSU Cascades. Third thing I'll mention is that last night I met with the Southern Deschutes County Chapter of the Central Oregon Trail Alliance and just shared with them a little bit of information about the upcoming partnership grant opportunity that we're working on with the Deschutes Trails Coalition for transient room tax revenue provided by the county. And also talked with them a little bit about development of county parks, including some discussion of the, the Fort Thompson, the potential Fort Thompson project. And no surprise, Coda expressed an interest if we're, if we're developing trails that are, or developing parks, that there'd be opportunities for trails in, in those parks. So. And, and they were really curious when the feasibility study was going to get going.
Okay. Commissioner DeBong?
So I'll show up to the forest thing in the morning and for about a half a day. So I'm not sure exactly what, you know, how it'll flow or when I'll step out, but I'll be able to be there for half a day on that. Yesterday afternoon, simple, a little high school event. Commissioner Dare was there too. I didn't know she'd be there, but we were both invited, maybe we were all invited to bite of reality. It's just a financial education for the high school students. So it's just a group classroom high school exercise. But it was really good to, you know, watch the kids. In fact, for me, it was, they're all using iPads. It was an app that they needed to kind of implement for the project. It ended up, in the end, it was a pie chart of their financial choices and, you know, how they're going to generally set up a budget for the year. So that was the outcome of that. But it was just a great experience being able to be there with the kids. So that was fun. Also today at lunch just now, I was able to attend the East Cascade Works, Workforce Investment Board, the quarterly meeting. So this is a bunch of, you know, employers and industry people all coming to the table talking about employment and same story that we're hearing at Deschutes County. In fact, I was able to share the concept that Randy Scheid mentioned about getting the inspectors helping with the credentialing for the journeymen electricians. But yeah, everybody's just kind of jacking for, for the new talent right now and, and people are coming and going. So same story that we're hearing. Hopefully we can all support each other in these challenging times. So that's the two items I have.
Okay. And I just want to truly compliment the parents of the sophomore class, the 10th graders that were participating yesterday. They were an amazing group of 15 and 16-year-olds. Truly, their parents are doing something right. They were, I know, we were supposed to be encouraging them to overspend.
That was our job.
But they, they actually got it. They got it before, and they got it that, oh no, I don't need to waste my money on this. I don't need to pay for someone to come and shampoo my rugs. I can do that myself. So I even had kids, several students that made charitable donations. And I thought, this is, it was really incredibly encouraging with the maturity of those students. So, you know, thank you for that program and I hope they can continue it on. Before I was there, we actually had the first meeting for the Sisters Trail Stakeholder Committee. And that was interesting, looking at the maps and how we need more maps. And it was a good start to that group. We'll be meeting in the next so many months with decision making for that program, for the Sisters Trails. And they were trying to keep everything balanced. So, you know, between bike trails and horse trails and walking trails. So it was, it was a good, good event. Tomorrow I have a homeless meeting in the, I have something tonight for homeless and then tomorrow I have another meeting with the Sheriff's Office regarding homeless and what we're going to be doing. And then I'm actually going to see J.R. Collier, who is responsible for the Oregon State Parks in our region. So I'm looking forward to seeing J.R.
Real quick question about the trails. Was there any discussion about motorized vehicles, ATVs or side-by-sides?
Not really. I know we want to keep.
So it didn't have, it didn't come up? Or these are different trail systems?
Well, we're working, yeah, we're working on what we can do, what we can expand, what exists now, how good is it?
So it wasn't part of the discussion?
I was just worried about riding my horse.
Oh yeah, no, I know. It's a conflict. Exactly what I'm acknowledging.
It's really, it's a big
Stephanie. Good afternoon. We would love to reconvene our meeting at this moment in time. We do have on our agenda now, other items. Commissioners, is there something you would like to bring up?
Couple of quick things this year. This Friday and Saturday, there will be a learning, early learning conference coordinated by COCC at the COCC campus. I'm going to be speaking on a panel on Saturday after lunch about advocacy. Also just wanted to mention again that the Board of Forestry is here in Deschutes County. These couple of days, they're meeting just the other side of Highway 97 right now in their kind of regular board meeting format, indoor format, and there'll be a field trip tomorrow. It should be a really exciting field trip in a lot of ways. They're, you know, they're going to be showcasing the great work that we're doing in our community on many fronts. From the use of fire resilient building materials and practices at Miller Tree Farm to collaborative forest restoration work on the Deschutes National Forest, to some of the, you know, private land work that will be supported by $6.2 million through SB 762 landscape resiliency funding, and many other things that are happening here. So would just encourage my fellow commissioners and anyone who was watching to, to track what's happening with the Warder Commissioners. There's also a reception this evening over at OSU Cascades. Third thing I'll mention is that last night, I met with the Southern Deschutes County Chapter of the Central Oregon Trail Alliance, and just shared with them a little bit of information about the upcoming partnership grant opportunity that we're working on with the Deschutes Trails Coalition for transient room tax revenue provided by the county, and also talked with them a little bit about development of county parks, including some discussion of the Fort Thompson, the potential Fort Thompson project, and no surprise, Coda expressed an interest if we're developing trails that, or if we're developing parks, that there be opportunities for trails in those parks. So, and they were really curious when the feasibility study was going to get going.
Okay. Commissioner Dubon?
So I'll show up to the forest thing in the morning and for about a half a day. So I'm not sure exactly what, you know, how it'll flow or when I'll step out, but I'll be able to be there for half a day on that. Yesterday afternoon, simple, a little high school event. Commissioner Dare was there too. I didn't know she'd be there, but we were both invited, maybe we were all invited to bite of reality. It's just a financial education for the high school students. So it's just a group classroom, high school exercise. But it was really good to, you know, watch the kids. In fact, for me, it was, they're all using iPads. It was an app that they needed to kind of implement for the project. It ended up, in the end, it was a pie chart of their financial choices and, you know, how they're going to generally set up a budget for the year. So that was the outcome of that. But it was just a great experience being able to be there with the kids. So that was fun. Also today at lunch just now, I was able to attend the East Cascade Works, Workforce Investment Board, the quarterly meeting. So this is a bunch of, you know, employers and industry people all coming to the table talking about employment. And same story that we're hearing at Deschutes County. In fact, I was able to share the concept that Randy Scheid mentioned about getting the inspectors helping with the credentialing for the journeyman electricians. But yeah, everybody's just kind of jockeying for, for the new talent right now, and people are coming and going. So same story that we're hearing. Hopefully, we can all support each other in these challenging times. So that's the two items I have.
Okay. And I just want to truly compliment the parents of the sophomore class, the 10th graders that were participating yesterday. They were an amazing group of 15 and 16-year-olds. Truly, their parents are doing something right. They were, I know, we were supposed to be encouraging them to overspend-
That was our job.
But they, they actually got it. They got it before, and they got it that, oh no, I don't need to waste my money on this. I don't need to pay for someone to come and shampoo my rugs. I can do that myself. So I even had kids, several students that made charitable donations. And I thought, this is, it was really incredibly encouraging with the maturity of those students. So, you know, thank you for that program, and I hope they can continue it on. Before I was there, we actually had the first meeting for the Sisters Trail Stakeholder Committee. And that was interesting, looking at the maps and how we need more maps. And it was a good start to that group. We'll be meeting in the next so many months with decision making for that program for the Sisters Trails. And they were trying to keep everything balanced. So, you know, between bike trails and horse trails and walking trails. So it was, it was a good, good event.
Any discussion about-
Tomorrow, I have a homeless meeting in the, I have something tonight for homeless, and then tomorrow, I have another meeting with the Sheriff's Office regarding homeless and what we're going to be doing. And then I'm actually going to see JR Collier, who is responsible for the Oregon State Parks in our region. So I'm looking forward to seeing JR.
Real quick question about the trails. Was there any discussion about motorized vehicles, ATVs or side-by-sides?
Not really. I know we want to keep-
So it didn't have, it didn't come up? Or these are different trail systems?
Well, we're working, yeah, we're working on what we can do, what we can expand, what exists now, how good is it, and-
So it wasn't part of the discussion, huh?
I was just worried about riding my horse.
Oh yeah, no, I know. It's a conflict. Exactly what I'm acknowledging, yeah.
It's a really, it's a big conflict. So they said they didn't want to ignore horses completely, and, you know, and the good news is, Kim McCrell, who writes that phenomenal horse trail book for Central Oregon, is part of the committee. So we're going to, I believe we're going to have a lot of balance on it.
Much of the effort to create motorized trails, it happens in, like, the, like, new, new OHV areas are established. So it's like whole areas are planned instead of just like single, single strands of trail. So I, as far as I know, none of those, you know, none of the existing or proposed OHV trail areas are in, you know, in the immediate vicinity of Sisters. So I wouldn't expect it to come up during the, these discussions.
I just know that the most beautiful horse ride back trails that I've ridden on have been in Sisters in my whole life. So I have not done the Chief Joseph-
Is that why you live there?
Yes. No, I haven't done the Chief Joseph Trail. I was going to do that. I think that's like 100 miles that you ride in a week, but you have to have an Appaloosa for that. And I really had wanted to do that. It was on my list. And then my Appaloosa I had, was found to be defective. So I'm like, I'm, I don't have an Appaloosa now to ride. And you must have a registered Appaloosa for that, for that, that trail ride. So do we have anything else? Can we, Nick?
Commissioners, we received late last week, the announcement for the annual luncheon, Edco's annual luncheon. And so just two questions there. The first is if we would like to reserve a table as we usually do. If so, the cost this year for a table is $973.50. That's the first question. And if yes, the second question would be, do we want to allocate some of our video lottery dollars for that? It is an eligible expense, and so that would be a logical funding source for that. So-
What day is this luncheon?
It's Monday, June 3rd, 13th, excuse me. Monday, June 13th.
And which group did you say this was?
Edco's annual luncheon.
Edco's annual luncheon at the-
At the fairgrounds?
At the River House.
Oh, at the River House. Okay. Because there's a luncheon at the fairgrounds too.
Eric had sent out a note recently too.
Yes, which is, and it's right during our meeting. And Sharon was very concerned and I had said about that one, maybe we could start our meeting at eight in the morning because we have like a full day. It's right before budget. So, okay, so this is June.
This is June. This would be your regular AOC day.
Okay.
Could I, could I ask, how many, how many staff usually are excited to go?
There's usually a handful. Sharon often will invite, if we, depending on how many people attend, if there are extra seats, additional staff will either sit at our table or departments will register their staff themselves. But I would say, I mean, at least five other department heads, we will often see last year, myself and a couple of people from CDD, I recall Health Services, our assessor. It's, yeah, it's usually a good handful of staff that attend.
I mean, I would, you know, to me, if, if it was only the three commissioners who were interested in going, then I wouldn't, it's kind of a lot of money, a lot of money for, to spend just, just for us to kind of have that, that, that visibility. But if there's actually a number of department heads who are interested in participating, then, you know, maybe 900, maybe $1,000 is like a good, you know, it works out in terms of kind of the cost per head.
Is that for 10 or 20 people?
Good question. It's probably eight to 10.
Right.
I didn't see the number.
Because 973 seems pretty-
Well, and I've seen some good participation by department heads and, you know, engaged staff. And it's valuable to be out there, just like we saw from our community development folks today. I mean, we are the service providers, but also having that personal interpersonal relationship at a lunch is very valuable. So I would lean towards supporting that table, knowing that there's, you know, a subset of managers that are ready to go.
You know, for the department heads to engage. I mean, other, you know, beyond that, I do feel like we, we support Edco in many ways. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel like it was super important to sponsor a table, just, just to support Edco. But if our, if our department heads will engage, then that's great.
Well, actually, I think we're supporting the River House and considering that business conventions have been minimalized the last couple of years. I'm really happy to do that. And if someone could tell me if it's May 18th for the Ready Luncheon. I, Sharon, are you on? Can you tell me?
Oh yeah, she was.
Sharon, is it May 18th?
It is May 18th for the Ready Luncheon, and the Edco table sponsorship is for 10.
Okay. So that's for 10. Okay. So the Ready Luncheon is at the fairgrounds, and it would mean, because we have a big agenda that day, because the next week is our budget hearing, I suggested to Sharon, because I thought it would be important for us to attend that one also, that if we maybe started at 8:00 AM, and then we could finish it like, what, 11, 11:15, and then come back and start at 2:00. With, Sharon, do you think that's going to be helpful enough for that agenda?
Yes.
And how much does that, do those tickets cost? Do you know?
That I will look for.
Okay.
So after this, before we leave, I do have one more other item thing before we leave this, but I don't want to cut off this discussion before we're done.
Oh, and officially, thank you for being with us, Sharon, you and your team, Carolyn, Megan.
Administrative Assistant Appreciation Day.
Yes.
Thank you for all of the wonderful words and gifts today. Back to the Ready Luncheon, it's $45 for Edco members and $60 for non-members.
Okay. So 45 a person then?
Right.
Okay. But they weren't asking us to do it, we don't do a table there normally at Ready?
I don't recall.
They don't offer it.
Okay. So is everyone, are you agreeable if we start at 8:00 that morning?
Oh yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that day will work.
Okay. Good, good. All right. Great. Sharon, thank you. And you know how much we'd love to go to our fairgrounds. I was there last weekend. They had, I think, almost 700 barrel racers for three days. There were horses in every barn, in every, the beef barn, the horse barn. It was unbelievable, the people from all over the United, well, from all over the US that run barrels. So, and thank you to Jeff and his team for responding to my requests when-
I saw the horse trailers driving up the highway.
Oh yeah. It was big. It was amazing. So, and then people actually stayed a few days longer because Idaho didn't start until, they couldn't go to Idaho, I think till Wednesday. So they, some of them actually stayed here for a couple of days. So we got a couple more days of board out of them. So that was good. Yeah, it was, it was amazing.
So one more other item. There was, the bulletin wrote an editorial this morning about mobile crisis response. And it, this editorial indicates that either the bulletin doesn't understand what we're doing, or the Bend City Council doesn't understand what we're doing. Because basically, they, they were saying like, we don't really have mobile crisis response, which we do. We have the MCAT. And I'm concerned that, so the, the Bend City Council was deliberating on, on their investment in, in the stabilization center yesterday, and I guess, kind of, an interest in mobile, you know, in, you know, investing more so that they could support mobile crisis response too, was brought up. And again, I can't tell from this editorial, I didn't watch the, the city council meeting, but the, the understanding that emerges from this, or the, the story that emerges from this editorial is that we're not really doing mobile crisis response now, and we need to kind of start doing that. And then the city of Bend would be willing to invest in that, and the, the bulletin, you know, congratulated us for making the stabilization center how it happened, but are kind of saying that we should be doing more on mobile crisis. And I do think we should be doing more on mobile crisis, but I don't think it is accurate that we're not doing anything currently. And so I'm just wondering, in terms of like communications work, you know, can we figure out who doesn't understand what we're doing and, and, and talk with them? Yeah.
I'm certainly happy to work with Holly and coordinate back with Richard Ko, who did reach out yesterday with, with a specific question for Holly around the discussion that occurred at the city council meeting. So we can definitely circle back. And then I think Holly would, based on, I will coordinate with Holly as well in terms of coordinating back with the city, if that's helpful.
That'd be great. Yeah. And I, I'm not, I'm not harping on this just to be defensive. It's, it's, I mean, we, we have a great mobile crisis assessment team, and we have like some really strategic planning to expand those services. And so I think, you know, I just want to, I think we should be tooting our horn about that. And if the perception is that we're not really doing anything, then that, that's, we want to correct that.
Sheriff Nelson was on KBND this morning, and he actually addressed that issue when he was on the radio, you know, saying, yes, our, our mobile team, you know, it's been around and incredibly important and effective. So at least we got that message out there at, what, 8:40?
Thanks, Whitney.
So, well, Dave should be back any second. Are we ready to go into executive then?